Welcome back, everybody. Now, as I'll just remind the room that we're dealing with an amendment to Programme Three, we're in the amendment debate, are there further contributions? councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I just rise to say that I don't agree with this tactic that councillor Johnson is using, trying to elicit a right of reply, and I, yeah, I don't agree with it, I think it's wrong and we shouldn't be doing this.
Further speakers?
Point of order, sorry, I'm just not, I didn't quite hear, what was the tactic that we're concerned about?
I believe he was making mention of the tactic of trying to make amendments on everything when no one else does, was his point.
Okay, so just for my understanding, just to clarify the rules...
I think, I think the point he was making is that if everybody did this, all we would do is make amendment debate, not substantive debate.
Okay, sure, I won't argue the...
All right, further speakers? There being none, oh, councillor Shree.
Just on, I thought I'd take up that conversation just really briefly, I think it's perfectly appropriate for councillors to move amendments to the budget, and I think that's the whole point of budget debates, if, if we were simply standing up here grandstanding about what's in the budget and what's not in the budget without trying to have constructive conversations about how we could improve the budget and thus moving amendments to that effect, then I think this would all just be a case of political theatre. I think, I think what is happening, though, is that most councillors in this place realise that the administration isn't going to tolerate any substantive amendments to the budget, and so it's become a form of political theatre, but that doesn't mean it should be the case. And if there are councillors in this chamber who take exception to the fact that some people are still using those processes to move amendments, then maybe it would be appropriate to have more meaningful conversations and collaborative discussions with councillors prior to the budget being drafted. It seems, I'm willing to acknowledge that it would take a lot of time if all councillors in this place were continually moving amendments to the budget, but the reason that some councillors have to do that is because we're not consulted beforehand or our meaningful and reasonable requests are completely ignored, and I think certainly I, I don't feel that the budget negotiations have been conducted in particularly good faith, I think there have been a lot of cases where I've raised obvious and legitimate concerns and haven't had timely responses. I must, I don't want to generalise too much, there are occasional moments where councillors will be willing to negotiate, but overall the process has not been particularly democratic or inclusive, and so I think it's perfectly reasonable for councillors to seek to move amendments and use procedural motions to get their, to represent their constituents where possible.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston?
Right, that's very interesting, I thank councillor Shree for stating the obvious. I know the LNP have no interest in supporting a democratic process in this place because, no, I'm sorry councillor Marks, don't give me that face, because councillors have just said in this place that they don't want me moving amendments to the budget, now, and coun... and I find that absolutely disgusting, because the meeting's local law in this place gives every single one of us the right to stand up and advocate for our residents, as I have done. Not only that, week after week after week in this place, the Lord Mayor, the Deputy Mayor, councillors stand up and say, "No one from the other side ever offers an agenda, no one ever offers to bring things forward, and I do time..."
Councillor Johnston, councillor Shree has brought up in the past that, that imitations is not a courteous thing to do here, and I agree with him, please, please refrain from imitations.
I do it week after week after week in this place to achieve outcomes for Tennyson Ward residents, because they are being neglected, overlooked and treated disrespectfully by the LNP administration. Most of them are shocked when you tell them what is going on, they, they, they're not silly, they are absolutely not silly out my way, and they can see when people, when people are doing the wrong thing by the voters in my area. Now, today, we've had two councillors, the chairman of council, who thinks that it's time wasting to move amendments in this place, and the councillor for Chandler, who thinks that it's some sort of tactic that I'm trying to speak as an elected representative in the Brisbane City Council. Now, let me be clear...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Murphy.
Claim misrepresentation.
Noted.
Let's be clear, it was a tactic that I am trying to speak in Brisbane City Council on amendments, that's exactly what he said, there's a record. Now, that's pretty disgusting, he thinks standing up and advocating for Tennyson Ward residents is a tactic, it's not. I've been an independent now for nine years, and for nine years I've been doing this, and I will not stop doing it. It is my job to stand up and advocate for Tennyson Ward residents, and it is my job to hold the Lord Mayor and all of the councillors who make decisions in this place to account to achieve better outcomes for Tennyson Ward residents, and I will do it every day, I will do it to the utmost of my ability, and I will do it with every bit of enthusiasm, passion and drive that I have. And if councillor Murphy, who's been here for, I don't know, a few years now, hasn't worked it out, he needs to, because I will use the provisions available to me as a democratically-elected representative under the meeting's local law to speak and advocate on behalf of my representatives. And attempts to stop me from doing so and criticisms of me for doing so are unacceptable, particularly when they come from the chairperson of council, who is clearly unfamiliar with section 41.4 of the meeting's local law. Now, it is disappointing that despite all of this criticism of me for moving an amendment, not a single councillor from the LNP side has spoken about the importance of dealing with flood mitigation in Tennyson Ward. That's what this motion amendment is about, to make sure that the backflow valves recommended by the independent report council undertook after the 2011 floods is fully implemented. I'd like it implemented around the city, there is no agenda by this administration to do so, so I will fight tooth and nail for my residents, who were catastrophically flooded in 2011, to have these backflow valves put in place. They won't stop flooding, but they will help mitigate the impacts of flooding the next time that they occur in this city, and that will happen. Now, if people don't think that's a valuable amendment, which they've put on the record here today and I'll be sharing with them, that's a poor reflection on them. If people think it's a tactic that I'm speaking and advocating for my residents, that is a poor reflection upon them, and I will be sharing this debate with them. I will be sharing that not a single LNP councillor spoke to the substantive issue of drainage and flooding in my ward, and I can tell you it is a huge issue that is raised with me every single week. They wonder why they cannot win this seat.
Councillor Murphy, your misrepresentation, and please limit your comments to the misrepresentation at hand and not use this as an opportunity to re-legate your argument, councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, the, the tactic that I was referring to in my speech was not moving amendments to the budget, which I believe is legitimate, the tactic I was referring to is this idea that you gain a right of reply when no one has spoken on the speech, and I believe councillor Johnson is now gaming that system in order to gain a right of reply to get other people to speak to it.
Thank you, yeah, thank you councillor Murphy.
We have 26 councillors here and we have equal time on budget.
All right.
So, Mr Chairman, with all due respect, saying that I...
No, hang on, no, 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 we're not just standing in this...
Point of order, point of order!
We're not...
Point of order!
Councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, the councillor for Chandler has just said that I am gaming the system, which is the meeting's local law, section 41.4 of the meeting's local law says I shall have the right of reply for five minutes on an amendment, and, Mr Chairman, saying that I am gaming the meeting's local law is disrespectful, inappropriate, and I ask that it be withdrawn.
Councillor Murphy, will you withdraw your comment? All right, we will now carry on to the debate of the motion.
So, point of order, Mr Chairman?
Excuse me, the vote, yes?
Are you going to make a ruling on the point of order about the disorderly conduct by councillor Murphy regarding his inappropriate comments?
I have asked him to consider withdrawing and he has declined. All right, to the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division?
Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Cassidy?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, ayes to my right, nos to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the nos have it, the voting being one in favour, nineteen against and five abstentions.
Thank you, councillors, please return to your seats.
Four abstentions, I'm sorry.
Four abstentions, that's correct, four abstentions. We return to substantive, substantive debate on Programme Three. Further speakers? councillor Timmy.
Thank you, Chair, I rise to speak on Programme Three. And I might start off, I did actually have what I thought was quite a benign speech until councillor Griffith got up yesterday and, and said what he said, and therefore I'm going to change direction. It's amazing how today that the Australian Labor Party and the Greens political party seem to think that they have a monopoly on the environment, they seem to think that they are the only political parties that actually care about the environment. Not so. I'd ask the question, who was the first person to do the bushland acquisition in Brisbane? Sally Ann Atkinson, Lord Mayor, a Liberal Lord Mayor at the time, and she continued to do so.
From it all.
And, thank you councillor Cummings, I'll take that on, I'll take that, I'll take that interjection, yes, she did, she did get voted out, but why did she get voted out? Because she put her head on the block, because she believed in something. Right? It's the, this bushland acquisition is extremely, is important for the city, acquiring forty per cent of the overall area of Brisbane for bushland preserves our lungs, it cleans the air, it locks carbon up, that what normally would otherwise...
Two wood moulds.
Would all, normally otherwise go into the air, but I particularly want to address some of the comments that councillor Griffiths made yesterday afternoon, and forgive me, I might be paraphrasing some of them, because I was trying to scribble notes down quickly. He said the budget was a deal for the election around bushland acquisition, he remarked that the LNP wards were pork-barreling to the tune of 73 million for bushland acquisition, and non-LNP wards to three million dollars of bushland acquisition. Then that reminded me, those particular comments actually reminded me of a question on notice that councillor Griffiths put on the chamber papers back on the 12th of March. And I'm going to read the questions in, if you'll bear with me, Chair. The first question was, how many residents have requested in the last 12 months that Brisbane City Council purchased their land through the bushland acquisition programme, and what were their specific addresses? The answer was return the following week, and the answer was, council had received ten requests from property owners to purchase their properties through the bushland acquisition. The addresses have been provided to the councillors separately, but due to their privacy and confidence nature, the properties are not disclosed to everyone, but the properties are located in suburbs such as Sunnybank, The Gap, Polara, Carrawatha, Hemant, Runcorn, Colo, Heathwood, Dulandelia, I hope I said that right? Thank you, Dulandella, and Sunnybank Hills. So then, being the studious back-bencher that I am, I actually finished last night, went back to work and had a look at what wards those suburbs were in. So Sunnybank is in the Runcorn ward, which is LNP, The Gap is obviously The Gap, which is my ward, Polara is at Maruka, which is councillor Griffiths' ward, so that's held by Labor, Carrawatha is Callumvale, held by LNP, Hemant at Doughboy, LNP, Runcorn at Runcorn, obviously, LNP, Colo at Pullumvale, Heathwood at Callumvale, councillor Cooper, Dune...
Dulandella.
Thank you, Dulandella at Forest Lake, and Sunnybank Hills at Runcorn. Now, the next question, keep in mind, the majority of those are LNP wards.
No.
You disagree? The majority of those are LNP wards, councillor Cassidy?
Oh, you need a big...
Yep. So the second question, which councillors over the last 12 months have requested Brisbane City Council purchase land within their wards under the bushland acquisition, and what were their specific addresses? Again, it came back, the addresses would be withheld, but in the last 12 months, there were only three councillors that actually requested bushland acquisition, three. They were councillor Owen, councillor Toomey and councillor Shrinna. Now, in the Courier-Mall last night, councillor Griffiths, there was a line in there saying, "It's, it's an amazing pattern of bushland acquisitions, it doesn't seem like the system is being routed to benefit LNP councillors", he said, that's what he said. But if we look at the bushland acquisition that residents have put forward to council, and the councillors that have actually made representation for their constituents around bushlands acquisition, the evidence by councillor Griffiths' questions is, they're not doing their job, their residents don't know about it, and they're not putting forward any bushland in their area.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, I seek leave to suspend so much of standing orders as to move a motion condemning councillor Toomey for providing incorrect information to the council chamber today.
Seconded. So you're moving an urgency motion to condemn councillor Toomey?
Yeah.
I suppose you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Now councillor Toomey has just stood up, and I presume there will be other councillors who are unhappy with what he's said, and hopefully we will have a substantive debate about this matter, but what I will say on the record is that councillor Toomey is wrong when it comes to me, for example, and I know that because I'm standing here with the letter written to the Lord Mayor asking for buyback. Councillor Toomey has either from error or deliberately has been advised that, and, well, it's interesting, isn't it, he's saying he's got access to confidential budget submissions, I'd really like to know how that's happened.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Toomey.
The item I have, I actually Googled it, it's in Google.
That's, that's, that's not, not a point of order, please don't use, please don't use point of orders to debate people inside their speeches.
That just sort of adds a little bit to the situation here about why this is urgent. Councillor Toomey hasn't done any investigation, say maybe asking the Lord Mayor, gee Lord Mayor, who's come to you and said we need buyback, councillor Toomey Googled it. Now, my letter to the Lord Mayor's certainly not on Google, it was taken to the Lord Mayor, I've had personal discussions with him, and guess what? In the committee of which I was a member, the Parks, Environment and Sustainability Committee for the last, I don't know, 10 years, every time we have a debate about bushland acquisition, I discuss it. I know councillor Griffiths has moved motions in this place calling for, calling for buyback of land in Oxley that this administration has voted against. Talk about a delusional reading of the situation based on a search on Google. So guess what, I'm going to table the letter that I wrote to the Lord Mayor to make it very clear that I've asked him personally, in writing and in a meeting face-to-face with him, to buy back land in multiple locations, including in Oxley, in Yoronga, and to assist, and Chelma, and to assist with buyback in other areas. I find it disappointing that a councillor would stand up and on the basis of Google, as we now know, declare that people aren't asking for bushland buyback, that is a categorically false assertion, it is now a matter of the public record what I have been advocating for, it has long been a matter of the public record what councillor Griffiths has been advocating for, including motions in this place, and I would just say to councillor Toomey that if you are going to make these huge statements that people aren't asking for bushland buyback, you should think about the debates we've had here and perhaps check with the Lord Mayor or others about who has actually been asking for bushland buyback, because for the last, I don't know, five years, I think councillor Griffiths' study was yesterday, two have been done in non-LNP wards and dozens in LNP wards, that is pork-barreling, that is shameful when there are parks of this city that need buyback.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. All those who support urgency, say aye?
Aye.
And to the contrary, no.
No.
The nos have it. Councillor Timmy, please continue.
Thank you, Chair. In reference to councillor Johnston's notice, I think she might want to check the council papers dated the 12th of March 2019, the questions are pretty clear, I'm referring to the last 12 months, I'm not talking about forever, the record stands. In reference to, in reference to bushland acquisition, I also actually printed out a number of maps, and I apologise for the quality of them, this was the largest that I could get, but there's a whole map of the city, the, the properties that have been acquired are actually in purple, the areas that are in green are already protected. Now, everything else you see there would be urbanisation. Now, when we go and look at, say, let's, let's say Maruka, since Maruka's in the heart of it, there's a whole heap of green through there that looks like it's already protected. There is some bushland, some green up in the far corner that borders Holland Park, I'm assuming that's Nathan, the Nathan area, but the rest is urbanised. So my question is, how do you acquire bushland in your ward if there is no bushland? Where is all the bushland in Brisbane? It's in wards like Pullumvale, The Gap, there's some at Deegan, there's some at Northgate, there's some at Hamilton, Chandler, there's some at Winham, yes, there's, there's bushland there. But in wards where they're almost urbanised, there's very little room to acquire bushland. So the fact that councillor Griffiths runs off to the quest, saying that, oh, you know, there's this whole pork-barreling going on, well, we don't decide where we buy bushland where there is not bushland, we buy bushland where there is bushland. So I honestly think that councillor Griffiths probably needs to correct the record with the quest, I think it's quite misleading, and I'm pretty sure, well, I'm hoping anyway, that Mr O'Malley will, will come back to him and ask a few more difficult questions around his statements yesterday. There's no pork-barreling going on here, you don't, you can't buy bushland where there isn't any, it's just, it's just a ridiculous way of carrying on for the councillor for Maruta.
Councillors, we heard in silence, please. Councillor Toomey, please continue.
Thank you, Chair. But to, to further go on, if, if the chamber will indulge me, as I said before, the Greens political party and the Labor Party seem to think that the bush and the environment is their domain, it's no longer their domain, it never was their domain, it's the place of the people. This administration is ensuring that people understand their everyday choices have an impact, and we're helping them reduce their carbon footprint and their waste within our society, that is what we are doing. This is a liberal administration looking after the environment and ensuring that our carbon footprint and our waste footprint is as small as possible. Anyway, I've had my say, thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the Clean and Green and Sustainable City Programme. Mr Chair, this programme is a critical area of our budget that impacts on the daily lives of all Brisbaneites, it's because of this I would like to point out a number of projects that I feel could be, could, we could do more in to make Brisbane even a better place to live. The Forest Lake ward is probably not a typical type of area, or I should say ward, its, its scope and design of, of other wards, primarily consists of large, two large master-planned communities, Forest Lake, which was designed in the 90s, and the Inala-Durack area that was, that was designed and constructed in the 40s and 50s. These areas have a lot of green space that need to be cared for ongoingly, and we need to continually to invest to maintain these, these areas to rate payers' expectations. There are thousands of trees in our parks and roadways, and they all need looking after. But, Mr Chair, the infrastructure in our parks has sadly been neglected, not just in my ward, but in others, and this can't be, and this can't be addressed by our suburban enhancement fund, which, which can't really keep up with the needs of, which cannot be kept up with the needs of these areas. There are parks in my wards that have seen for many years, their shelters haven't seen their shelters refreshed, denuded, denuded land, re-turfed, safety lighting installed and, and fuel reduction, because they're, they're really have become, in some cases, a fire risk. Mr Tur, I look at these investments in our new parks, which is something that I have been advocating for, for my short tenure, and this budget is responding to the establishment of some new parks, but the investment in our existing parks is falling short. Mr Chair, we should be increasing the activisation in our parks, we need to maintain and improve the amenity and make them more attractive to residents. So here's a, here's a, here's an idea, Lord Mayor, what about using some of the green future fund to refresh, to refresh existing neighbourhood and suburban parks? The future is now. Mr Chair, waste reduction and recycling are two of the biggest challenges for any council. As Australia's largest council, what we do in these areas will be followed by others. So it's important that we just not follow best practice, but in some cases lead with new ideas. Mr Chair, I see little improvement with recycling in our general waste. We heard in estimates that there is 12,000 tonnes that were collected each year from our annual curbside collection, and only two per cent of it is recycled, this means 98 of it, 98% of it goes into landfill, which is not really sustainable when you, when you think about it. So what are we going to do to improve this major issue? We have, we have done little really to, to address this but for a new recycling, mattress recycling programme. Our landfill capacity and options are quickly disappearing, with China not accepting recyclable products from Australia and other countries, we... With China not accepting recyclable products from Australia and other countries, we, we have to look at investing in partnerships with industry to develop a recycling business onshore to recycle and repurpose what we used to send to China. Other councils, other councils and private industry in Australia and overseas are doing this work and we have the means to do so as well. The Queensland Government is currently, currently has grants to assist councils and private industry to develop a recycling business that would produce a recyclable product that can be used in manufacturing. There has been a major shift in people's thinking when it comes to recycling and this is being played out with the state government's deposit return scheme. Mr Chair, waste reduction is something that we need to invest in and we need to do more. Love Food Hate Waste Programme has been operating for a few years, but when I asked Councillor Howard why there isn't any funding allocation after 1920, she said that just because there is no allocation in the future, in the future budgets, it doesn't mean that it won't continue. Well, that may be, that may be, but in my experience, if it's not in the forward estimate, it's probably at risk and we need to, we need to, and this would be a terrible indictment on the council. The allocation this, in this year's budget is meagre, 323,000, a small amount in the scheme of things, and I hope Councillor Howard fights for its continuance and its increase. Mr Chair, another programme I would like to see continue and be greatly increased is the reci, is the reusable NAPY rebate lottery scheme. What this has had, this has had some effect on reducing the amount of disposable NAPYs that lends, ends up in our landfill. Now, 4% of all landfill is just from this one product. Mr Chair, some councils allow food waste to be put in green top bins instead of landfill. I encourage anyone who hasn't seen the three-part series on Love Food Hate, Love Food Hate Waste on I View to have a look. You'll see a council in Australia that allows food waste to be placed in green top bins and then recycled. What is really interesting, what I was watching was how, how they went about educating the residents in what they can and cannot be put in those bins. Finally, Mr Chair, I would like to finish my time with service item 3.5.2.1, City Cleaning. There are four programmes in this, in this item and my favourite is the litter prevention, as I've talked about many times in this place. The team that looks after this programme works, works passionately about educating the public and looking for strategies to get residents involved with litter prevention. This programme is one of the best investments we undertake in keeping our Brisbane city clean. I encourage council to ramp up this funding, the funding of this project, so that we can do more in this space. Sadly, what we're seeing is the funding has really stagnated over the years in this, for that particular programme. Another programme that I think we should greatly invest in and increase our investment in, I should say, is the street sweeping. There is a good increase in this year's funding, I think it's about 20%, but keeping our streets clean will have a great impact on our environment, which has been, has become, and it has become very real for me in my ward, when I hadn't, when I was given an understanding of the nutrient load that actually flows into the lake from leaf litter that flows down our stormwater drains. Now, half the properties in Forest Lake empty their stormwater into the lake itself, the other half goes through the Oxley Creek catchment area. But it's really, it's something that we should actually do a lot more in this space. I, I was of the view, of course, before I knew that, that, you know, property owners should sort of make sure that their, the gutters probably in front of their houses, that they should keep them as clean as possible. And we're working with the, working with my residents in this area, but I think it's important that, that we look at increasing the amount of street sweeping that's actually happening right around Brisbane, right throughout all the wards. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks Chair. I rise to speak on Programme Three, Clean, Green and Sustainable City, which will see Brisbane recognised as a sustainability leader with an enviable lifestyle and reputation. Programme Three provides important park and tree assets as an important element of a resilient urban forest that will deliver essential community benefits such as shade, cooling and amenity for current and future generations. I am proud to live in Australia's most biodiverse capital city with more than 2,100 parks and 108 conservation reserves spread over 100 million square metres of beautiful landscape. Speaking of which, it is an honour to be the councillor for war, the ward that includes Fig Tree Pocket. Why? Well, Fig Tree Pocket happens to be home to one of the world's leading centres for koalas and koala research. I attended Lone Pine on Tuesday to meet with staff and to understand their values and concerns, and their values are to be authentic, relaxing, interactive, natural. As the manager said to me, if you want to feed a crocodile, go to Australia Zoo, if you want adrenaline, go to Dreamworld, if you want a truly memorable experience, come to Lone Pine. And they do amazing work at Lone Pine Chair, their special population of koalas goes through, you won't believe it, about 50 wheelie bins of gum leaves each and every day, that is a lot of eucalyptus fodder. And it's for that reason that I'm particularly enamoured with the Lord Mayor's commitment to fund a comprehensive research programme to establish Brisbane as Australia's koala capital. Parenthetically, the koala will be added to Brisbane's official faunal emblem alongside the green tree frog. And as I said, I was fortunate enough to visit Lone Pine Koala Sanctuary on Tuesday. And aside from being peed on by a koala named Sprocket, it was good to note the Lord Mayor's commitment of $386,000 to fund a comprehensive koala research programme to support a healthy population and re-establish koalas in suitable areas of vacant koala habitat in Brisbane. The outcomes of the research will be shared with the Brisbane Koala Science Institute at Lone Pine as part of a wider effort to protect the koala population. Lone Pine Koala Sanctuary is over the moon. Residents of Walter Taylor are particularly impressed with the Lord Mayor's commitment to provide more than 40,000 free native trees to residents each year. This will of course help us to increase the level of natural green cover across the city from 37 to 40% by 2031. And I note with interest the programme under Biodiversity, Urban, Forest and Parks, which includes funding for jacarandas. For anyone who has been in Brisbane during September through to November, you would have seen the stunning purple carpet of jacarandas. The Lord Mayor is adding to this with a vision for planting hundreds of jacarandas in Belimba, St Lucia and New Farm. More than 107,000 has been attributed to this wonderful programme in the budget. And yet yesterday, Councillor Griffith disparaged the jacaranda planting programme because he called them a weed. And Chair, I do note that Councillor Cook was laughing and shaking her head at that. Through you Chair, if you don't want your allocation for Belimba, Councillor Cook, I'm sure the residents of New Farm and St Lucia would be very grateful for them. I note the other line items in Service 3.3.2.1, Managing Trees on Public Land. Greener Suburbs provides targeted delivery of local street planting and more than $1.7 million has been allocated to this important project. Park Tree Management provides proactive maintenance programmes to manage risk, meet local priorities and provide shade in our public areas with $700,000 allocated to this. And something that has not received enough focus, nearly half a million dollars has been allocated to protect the beautiful camphorol trees in Chelma, which give the area its unique character. When I stand on the pontoon of the Indrapilly Canoe Club and gaze across the river to Chelma to those residents who wish they live in Walter Taylor, I acknowledge that they do have stunning trees in Laurel Avenue and I am sure the $479,000 to protect, rejuvenate and restore the heritage trees will continue to make the good residents of Chelma pleased. And if you haven't seen these majestic trees Chair, I suggest you do yourself a favour and get on down. I'll just mention a few other interesting and important projects that are either in or near Walter Taylor. 3131 provides funding of more than $5.5 million for the Oxley Creek Transformation Proprietary Limited to transform the Oxley Corridor into a world-class green lifestyle and leisure destination befitting our new world city and complementing Brisbane's subtropical outdoor lifestyle. As we know, Oxley Creek meets the river across from Walter Taylor. Service 3331, Upgrade Neighbourhood Parks. I'm pleased to see Turley Street Park in Fairfield, which is in the top 10 for the amount of funding allocated, not in Walter Taylor but across the river. And Tremmy's Corner Park in Paddington, as both of these are examples that have received funding under that line item. Under the Parks Maintenance and Renewal Service, it's, excuse me, excuse me. Sorry. Under the Parks Maintenance and Renewal Service, it's so good to see the toilet amenities for St Lucia Playground, improvements to Fruit Park in Milton in the neighbouring ward and nearly $100,000 for improved saving light, safety lighting in Normrose Park in Fairfield, which is not in Walter Taylor but is across the river. I'm sure we'd all agree it's fantastic to have money invested into river wall rehabilitation to stop erosion and so on, and at Jollymont Street in Sherwood under Service 3.4.2.2, also not in Walter Taylor, but I can see it from my side of the river. Of course, Brisbane's open drainage network operates at optimum capacity to minimise the impact of flooding on people, property and infrastructure. So it is great to see the Lord Mayor has budgeted for major waterways vegetation management funding for Oxley Creek at Hall Avenue in Corinda and Pratton Street in Corinda, also close to but not quite in Walter Taylor. Service 3.4.4.3, Drainage Rehabilitation maintains the stormwater drainage network so it can operate at design capacity, so funding at the Brisbane Corso in Fairfield would be welcome by those residents who live across the river from Walter Taylor. The LNP has consistently delivered for the people of Brisbane and we have responsibly managed the city's budget and we're investing the dividends in all things to keep us clean, green and sustainable.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, this programme contains some very important components and I want to deal first with bushland acquisition. And we, we support bushland acquisition and much is being made of the area of land being acquired by council. But if you actually have a look at the bushland acquisition levy reports that come out on a regular basis, the funds actually spent on bushland acquisition are only amount to about a third of the, the money raised. And I refer to the report for March 2019 where the bushland acquisition, well, sorry, the bushland acquisition preservation levy revenue after pensionary mission was some 20, at this nine months into the financial year, 23,266,880. The amount actually allocated to bushland acquisition at that time, $7,987,950, so 34.33%. So I guess, obviously as I said, we support the, the acquisition, but if they put all the money into acquisition, which is what the levy's called, then there wouldn't in fact be a lot more land being acquired. But anyhow, the other thing about it is the, the history, and I don't want to dispute the history, it's the first blocks of land were purchased under, when Lord Mayor Atkinson was met Lord Mayor of Brisbane. But there are only, there were two, two blocks of land, one at the Gap on the, was acquired on the 28th of September 1990 and one at El Paso Street, Baden on the 14th of March 1991, which would have been, I think, just before the, the council election in 1991 when Jim Sawley was successful in becoming Lord Mayor. But, and I can recall in, in one of my early years as a councillor, I got elected in 94, we had a significant increase in the bushland acquisition levy. And that was a, like an increase because the, the administration, the Sawley administrations considered there wasn't much, enough money being raised from the levy to, to buy a significant enough areas of land, so we, we increased it substantially at that stage. But anyhow, as I said, as I said, it's, it's a good programme and, but the other thing that I've got some concerns about and that is of course the expenditure of the levy. And we've seen in recent times, the, in my view, the abuse of the levy in purchasing that land at Mount Grabat East, Carrara, Nurran Streets, the, the land had been cleared of trees. Lawfully, it had been cleared of trees, that was ignored. The fact that the land was not contiguous to, with any adjoining areas of bushland, that was ignored. The, the danger to koalas any of encouraging them to go to that area of land, crossing major roads in that area like Pine Mountain Road and Cavendish Road. And there's real concerns in future if the, we don't know how many, we just, we think it's about 20 years before there'll be enough mature trees for a koala to, to go to. And it sounds like the amount of leaves they, they, they eat, I think they're, they're probably, all those trees that have been planted, they're probably, it's one koala the only one that'll ever live there, otherwise if there's two of them go there, they'll be starving. But anyhow, that's beside the point, but they will be encouraged across major roads. And I understand it's already an issue in that area where koalas are being hit regularly on those, on those roads and killed. So anyhow, but back to the guidelines for the expenditure of the bushland levy, I've sought advice from council offices and they tell me, you, you just look at page 239 of the, 239 of the budget. And if you read that, if you read that programme, it is so broad, you could drive a truck through it, you, you could, you could buy, I don't know what you could, you could buy any sort of bit of land that, you know, it's, it says, in the opinion of council, will, or rateable land of city has benefit, will benefit from the acquisition and protection of natural bushland, that's okay, or other areas in the city and the provision of facilities for public access to those areas. So you could be, could spend the, the money on footpaths I suppose, or, you know, a footpath to allow you to access to the, to the little pocket of bushland, the protection of other natural bushland there in the city where privately owned or otherwise. And the preservation, this is the big one, the preservation, restoration, rehabilitation, management and enhancement of the city's environment undertaken or proposed to be undertaken by council. Fair think I'm, as I said, a very large truck you could drive through and, and purchase land that wasn't particularly any good habitat. And the council of course does have guidelines, it's sort of informal guidelines, they're not written. And that's the reason why a lot of requests, I've put a few requests in over the years, they've been knocked back and they've got the reasons why they knocked them back. So what I'm suggesting is that we should have a, a better set of guidelines than currently exists, we should have it so it's more transparent and that it's not open to abuses, which is what has happened recently. So that's my, that's my concerns. So Labor would introduce properly formulated guidelines for how properties could be selected for bushland acquisition. I've got to say, I have put in requests, Councillor Toomey said people haven't put in, I have put in requests for bushland acquisition in the past, most of them unsuccessful. I've actually, I put in a request, my most successful one was putting a request for bushland to be acquired in, in the Doughboy Ward. And I'm sure Councillor Murphy approved it as well, but there's a string of significant properties, acreage properties came on the, came on the market on Green Camp Road and I put in a submission and lo and behold, within a couple of months, council had bought nearly all the properties. And so I, I put, I claim credit for that, but you know, I'm sure other people claim credit for us well, but it's a, and it's a significant area which has been planted out with trees now and a lot of, lot of good work's been done there by local community groups. But the, that brings me to the next point about the Community Conservation Partnerships Project. It has had a cut in funding in this budget and that is a matter of grave concern, it's down from a proposed 5.296 million down to 4.815, which is a substantial It's down from a proposed 5.296 million down to 4.815, uh, which is a substantial drop of funding. So, and that's a great shame that if all the volunteers do all the great work on bushland across the city, are going to have their funding cut. So I'm very concerned about that. Uh, the administration's talked a lot about trees, but the funds actually allocated for the project, park tree management is actually down as well. Last year, 790,000 was proposed, this year, eight fourteen thousand in the old budget, but the new budget only allows for 700,000. That's eleven point four per cent lower than it was proposed to be last year. So they've had a lot of, you know, rhetoric in the media, the Lord Mayor, about all his green, you know, credentials and, you know, he's trying to maximise the green preferences going to him at the next election because he's worried about compulsory preferential. But, but when you look at it, when the actual funding of programmes, they've actually cut some of the major programmes across the city and I think that's a real concern. And of course, then we come to jacarandas. Well, look, it was this administration, you know, councillor, councillor Shrinna wasn't arguing against it. The, the previous Lord Mayor and the administration were saying that jacarandas were weeds and we shouldn't be planting any more jacarandas, we should get rid of them, get some of the existing ones. And uh, you know, basically jacarandas weren't wanted in Brisbane. Well, what rubbish, Madam Chair. Uh, the, Mr Chair, sorry, the, I, Rod Harding came out and said, look, we could consider a jacaranda festival. You know, Grafton's got one, but we could have one as well. That was his attitude, that was a correct attitude, that was a, 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 the great splash of purple that comes out all around Brisbane at certain time of year is great for, great with jacarandas. And it's, and it's a bit sad that the administration had to do such a U-turn to come back to being remotely in touch with the, with the rest of the electorate. Uh, the other thing is the, the other thing that this administration's claiming, you know, they're going to be handing out native plants. Look, that's been happening for years, there's nothing new, you know, everyone get two native plants with your rates notice. Uh, native plants for people at citizenship ceremonies. And this has been, all been announced as though it's something new and it's actually doing something that's been happening for years. So again, the sort of, the misleading and false and misleading conduct of this administration is, is, is most disturbing and it's been happening a lot in this budget. And it's been happening a lot, unfortunately, it seems to be the modus operandi of the new Lord Mayor to, to claim that something that's been happening for years is suddenly something new and it's only happened because of him, which is absolute rubbish, Madam Chair. Mr Chair, absolute rubbish, absolute rubbish. So uh, this programme, while it's an important programme, it's very disappointing that some of these cuts have been made and it's not satisfactory what's occurred.
Further speakers? councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise in support of Programme Three, Clean, Green and Sustainable City. Mr Chair, Brisbane is renowned for its livability. Many facets of the Clean, Green and Sustainable City Programme are at the root of making that livability real and continuing into the future. Programs that deliver green spaces for our residents and visitors, programs that look after our wildlife, programs that manage, reduce and eradicate pests and invasive species, and waterway health programs are at the basis of our green city. Initiatives in enhancing our waste management and recycling programs and pursuing a low-carbon future makes us a clean and sustainable city. And increasing our preserved bushland areas keeps a green heart pulsing throughout our suburbs. As a north sider, I'm very excited about the Lord Mayor's announcement to transform Victoria Park Golf Course into the biggest new park in Brisbane in half a decade. Creating a park of this magnitude on the north side of the river will not only provide green space for the inner northern suburbs, but it will be an amazing space for all Brisbane residents, including residents of McDowell. And I know it's been said that this new park has the potential to be like the iconic Central Park. I've been lucky enough to visit Central Park. It's a phenomenal piece of public space that really is the heart of New York City. And I know that our new park will reflect all that is great about our Brisbane lifestyle and create a community space that will be the envy of other cities. So when the time comes, I look forward to encouraging my residents to participate in the consultation process and put forward their vision for the park because it will be a fantastic space for all Brisbane residents to enjoy. Mr Chair, we have high-quality park facilities right throughout Brisbane. Across the city, there are new facilities and enhancement works that will be delivered in this budget, including new playground equipment installations, park upgrades, boundary fencing, park lighting upgrades, visitor facility installations, including toilet, barbecues, furniture and shade provisions and pathway construction. And I'm delighted that in this budget, two parks will receive enhancements in the coming year. In Grey Gum Park in Stafford Heights, we'll have eighty-one thousand dollars to go towards relocating exercise equipment. There's been an ongoing issue with interfering tree roots, so it's great that the equipment will be moving to a more suitable part of the park. And in McDowell Reserve, a hundred and eight thousand has been allocated to address the cracking and structural failure of the Hart Court. These additional upgrades will ensure that our local parks provide a range of safe and enjoyable recreational opportunities for McDowell Ward residents. The off-leash areas are really popular in the McDowell Ward also and this is unsurprising when you consider that across the city over, in the last few years, that the number of dog off-leash areas has grown by about 20 per cent. So it's great that there's a rolling programme to rehabilitate and enhance existing dog off-leash areas. The funding for this programme has increased to eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in this budget and I'm delighted that the dog off-leash area in Jim Wilding Reserve in Bridgeman Downs will receive forty-one thousand dollars in funding for re-turfing and to have double gates installed. Under the Upgrading Facilities in Parks Programme, Brewerla Park in Stafford Heights will have fitness equipment installed and that will be to the tune of sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, and Fallon Park in Evanon Park will have a suite of works, including design and implementation of an upgrade to the park space behind the toilet block. This funding will also provide for the removal of the paved areas, installation of root barriers for the largest trees and to install a path to make access to the facilities easier and there'll be some additional seating through the park. Mr Chair, we're very lucky in McDowell Ward to have the beautiful Chirmside Hills Reserve on our doorstep and I'm excited that two locations have been included in the Views of Brisbane Initiative in this year's budget. Firstly, we have allocated funding for stage one design of Trout's Road picnic area in the Chirmside Hills Reserve. And this funding will go to upgrading facilities, including upgrading to the entry statement and fencing, picnic facilities, including the installation of a barbecue, some bins and also an upgrade to the car park and associated line marking. And secondly, there is funding for the design of a viewing observation point at the Milne Hill lookout in the Milne Hill Reserve. So I'm really pleased that McDowell Ward has funding under the Wildlife Movement Corridors Programme also. The safe movement of native animals between conservation reserves and habitat is important. So having funding for the installation of wildlife movement solutions in McDowell and surrounding areas to address a known wildlife hotspot area for koalas and wallabies is very welcome. We also have additional funding for the installation of temporary variable message signs in McDowell and Bridgeman Downs during the koala breeding season to alert drivers to the increased presence of koalas moving between conservation reserves and across roads. Mr Chair, I have been very proud to join a team that values bushland, a team that have continued with Sally Anne Atkinson's vision to provide a more natural area for wildlife and the residents of Brisbane and visitors to our beautiful city. And it's why I'm glad to say that under the leadership of Lord Mayor Graham Quirk and now Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna, we're meeting our target of 750 hectares of bushland in four years, having recently secured the milestone of 700 hectares, just as I was sworn in as councillor for McDowell. Mr Chair, this programme delivers for McDowell on those important things we don't always think about, stormwater drainage and waste management. Under the Drainage Construction Resilience Project, 278,000 has been allocated to stage two of drainage works to improve two residential properties in Sim Street, Evanon Park. We've also funding for works to be carried out in two flooding hotspots along Cabbage Tree Creek, firstly at the crossing at Albany Creek Road at Asplie and secondly for the crossing at Beckett Road, Bridgeman Downs. This is important because it's about restoring flood conveyance capacity, vegetation management and also to enhance the environmental values of our waterways. Mr Chair, I'm married to an engineer who has worked for most of his career in the public health and waste management areas. So discussion on the subject of waste and waterways were not uncommon in our household. But it wasn't until I started in the role as local councillor that I really did start to understand the true weight of waste in our city. About 1,200 tonnes of large items were collected from curbsides by wars. Approximately 280,000 tonnes of waste was collected by refuse and recycling M G B's collection services. Of about 87,000 tonnes of household recyclable waste collected, more than 90% of that was recovered, um, as recyclables were recovered. The bulk bin collection service collected approximately 40,000 tonnes of waste. Parks and footpath collection service collected over 3,800 tonnes of waste and recyclables. And the green waste recycling service currently has more than 96,000 households, including my household, participating in the programme and more than 25,000 tonnes of green waste was collected last year. They're astounding figures and I congratulate councillor Howard for her work in this area. Because these out-of-sight, out-of-mind services are essential to the functioning of this city. Mr Chair, the programs and services offered in Programme Three are central to Team Shrinna's vision for a clean, green and sustainable city and to make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of councillor Hammond and councillor McLaughlin before her and to commend Programme Three to the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this programme, Programme Three, and start by giving the councillor for Google a bit of a history lesson around bushland, particularly on the north side of Brisbane. Now, um, the, the Google councillor here, Mr Chair, said that the bushland acquisition levy is a great legacy of the Liberal administration of Sally Anne Atkinson. But when you look at the reports that all councillors are given here, you can see that the grand total of around 14 hectares was purchased by that administration. 14 hectares, two blocks. When the Sawley Labor administration came in, that administration realised how desperately poorly designed and underfunded the Atkinson bushland acquisition levy was, so ramped up, ramped up that acquisition. And what we saw over that period of the Sawley Labor administration was still to date a larger area of bushland acquired than has been by this L N P administration since they have been in office, Mr Chair. So I'm sorry councillor Toomey, but you are terribly, terribly wrong when it comes to your side's commitment to the bushland acquisition levy. Now, another thing that the, the Atkinson Liberal administration tried to do to bushland, particularly in my area, Mr Chair, was turn the Brighton wetlands, what is now the Brighton wetlands, which was secured by the Sawley Labor administration into a Bavarian-style shopping centre. And it was the community who rallied, who contacted the Labor candidate for Lord Mayor, Jim Sawley, and said, this is horrific. We do not want a Bavarian-style...
Councillor Cassidy, I appreciate that I've allowed a great deal of leeway so we can talk about things in generalities and, but, but to talk about a DA from the late 80s probably isn't relevant to the budget today.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
And I've, I've allowed a lot, I've allowed people to talk about Sally Anne and Jim Sawley and Tim Quinn and Campbell Newman, Graham Quirk. But, but, I mean, Bavarian-style DA in Sally Anne Atkinson, there's a lot of stuff you could talk about, but that's probably not relevant. Yes, point of order to you councillor Shree.
I, I respect the, what, what you're trying to do with that ruling, but I, I just do want to raise that concern of impartiality where you've allowed other councillors a very, very broad leash to talk about a lot of different stuff. So it's important to be consistent.
I'm, I'm attempting to be consistent and I've, I've allowed councillor Cassidy to talk about Sally Anne's bushland purposes, Jim Sawley's bushland purchases, but perhaps a DA from the 80s is not relevant to this discussion today. Thank you councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr Chair. When it comes to the acquisition of the Boondle Wetlands, which wasn't done under the, the bushland acquisition levy itself, but was preserved, councillor Toomey raised this and, and talked about a different political party's commitments to bushland and green spaces in this city and took us on a bit of a, a trip down the rabbit hole there. We followed him as far as we could go, without completely getting lost in his thoughts, Mr Chair. But when it comes to something like the Boondle Wetlands, the lungs of this city, the first 500 hectares of that was secured by a Labor administration working with a Labor federal government and that was purchased for $1. So 500 hect, the first 500 hectares of the Boondle Wetlands was purchased by, from the federal government by the Brisbane City Council, both Labor administrations, for $1. So let's not listen to this misinformation from councillor Toomey about what the Labor Party's commitment to green spaces is in this city. Now, talking about the more contemporary bushland acquisition requests, councillor Toomey got it very wrong. Councillor Johnson pointed out one of those instances where just, just this year, councillor Griffiths moved a motion to purchase bushland. Well, I did one of those as well for Brighton and that was following a formal request to the former chair of the committee, which was left unanswered, not even acknowledged for a year, Mr Chair. So I don't accept anything, I won't accept any lecture from a councillor who just goes and Googles something and comes in this chamber and claims as if that is all fact. Now, talking about this programme, Mr Chair, I'd like to talk about the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon specifically. Now, I welcome the, the funding of $250,000 to develop a strategy to address the ongoing and serious issue of water quality in the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon. It has been many years since councillors invested in this lagoon properly and it is the lagoon that sits, of course, in the very heart of the Sandgate community. The last time a large investment was made to the general amenity of the parklands area, again, Jim Sawley was still the Lord Mayor of this city. For many years now, this, this lagoon has suffered from regular blue-green algae blooms and persistent poor water quality at other times. The smell is often less than pleasant and the stop-gap measures, like wall repairs over the last few years, haven't even lasted one year. They have already slipped back into the lagoon and now we have pool fencing around our lagoon. I don't think we should be under any illusion these days, Mr Chair, that the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon is a particularly pristine natural environment. While as a water body, it used to be natural, I think we gave up that pretense many, many years ago when council filled in half of it to make a car park and that was back in the 1960s. And you can imagine in the 1960s, the type of fill, the mayor was Clem Jones at the time. So, uh, working in conjunction with local traders in the Chamber of Commerce, they decided they needed more car parking. It was the age of the car, of course, in local communities and they made that decision, which is a very poor decision in hindsight. So a lot of that fill that was used was, was particularly, turns out to be fairly toxic for a lagoon environment. A lot of things like ash, which over the time has leached into the lagoon. So the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon should not be looked at as a pristine, natural ecological system. It needs to be looked at as an asset that needs management and this one needs a lot of management, Mr Chair. So there is now a significant amount of silt, which has left the lagoon as shallow as one metre in some places. Less, that's when it's full, less when it's not full. The silt continues to build up while we have very steep concrete walls and no natural filtration like reeds and rushes and plants like lamandras and things like that around the edge. So every time it rains, the mulch the council puts around trees washes in, more dirt washes into the lagoon and all of the scum and oil and things off the road network around there wash into that lagoon directly as well. So we need more filtration in the lagoon itself, which could be achieved through wetland areas and the nutrient load of things like the infestation of tilapia and proper management of ivus population need to occur. These are just some of the ideas that should be considered during this important planning phase. Council did some planning back in the Newman days, but the proposal that was put forward included reclaiming some of that parkland for a wetland-style area for better water filtration. At the time, I'm advised, there wasn't enough community support received to council for that. Discussions I've had with councils experts suggests that the better option may be reducing the area of open water rather than expanding the lagoon itself. So either way, I think the community has been demanding and continues to demand a better solution and they deserve it, Mr Chair. So all the work that local businesses have done in partnership with council to attract more people to come to the heart of Sandgate, spend more time, spend more money locally in local businesses, is always dashed when people visit the lagoon, particularly on a warm summer's day and are driven away by the stench. If we don't act and don't act properly, we may as well fill in the lagoon because that's how serious it is getting. I recommit today to send with the administration and to work constructively with them to make sure we get it right and we owe that to the community. sure we get it right, and we owe that to the community. And just finally, on park upgrades. And I have to agree with what the leader of the opposition said earlier, it's very surprising to see the fairly lackluster investment in parks and park upgrades, given the Lord Mayor's recent rhetoric around this. In my ward, we get one neighbourhood park upgraded at Decker Park, which itself has an enormous list of upgrades that are desperately needed. I suppose that's a bit better than many other wards, because there's, again, one hundred and ninety suburbs around Brisbane, twenty-six wards, but there are just twenty-three upgrades in our parks to share around them. And Bald Hills gets two, Bald Hills gets two of those. Playground replacements and upgrading facilities in parks isn't much better. There is one shining light, I suppose, in this, Mister Chair, and that is enhanced safety lighting at Boondle Park, which will complement the new path connection that was funded out of the Deegan Ward Parks and Footpath Trust Fund this year, and it's something that the community, that part of Boondle has been advocating for, for a long time, which now connects that area directly to Sandgate Road and directly to the new pedestrian signals over Sandgate Road. And I've been in discussions with the state member for Nudgee Lee and Leonard, and encouraged to hear that there will be a brand-new footpath connecting our new path to those pedestrian lights in the coming months there. So, that is certainly a positive for the community. And finally, on the new park at Victoria Park, Mister Chair, the re-announced, yeah, the repurposing of the existing park to a different type of park use, which, you know, we support, of course. What we don't support, though, is the one million dollars that this Lord Mayor allocated in this budget, which hasn't even, you know, come to fruition yet, and we're already seeing in primetime TV slots on Channel Seven, ads, TV ads, Mister Chair, which is a hideous waste of money.
Further speakers, councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you very much, Mister Chair. I rise with pleasure to speak on Programme Three, and I'd like to commence by acknowledging councillor Hammond for her quick and capable transition to chairpersonship of this very important portfolio, and commend her for the work that she is doing, and also to commend the team with which I worked as the chair until recently in this portfolio. They do some fantastic work. I wanted to start by talking to one of the programme areas that is unlikely to get a whole lot of attention here in this debate, but it's a critical function that is performed by the council, and that goes to the services at three-point-two-point-three-point-one, and that's contaminated land management, and also further on, service three-point-five-point-two-point-one on closed landfill. Mister Chair, it's often overlooked that council is responsible for maintaining and managing over, or nearly a hundred and sixty, closed landfills. The history of our suburbs, unfortunately, going back many years, was that if there was a gully that was convenient to a new suburban area, it generally got filled in with rubbish from the surrounding areas. People didn't have vehicles to travel to tips further away from them, and so lots of our natural gullies back in the day were filled in with all sorts of materials that is now coming home to roost. I know you don't like me going back a long time in history, Mister Chair, but I do want to go back to one in my area that comes from the Second World War, Crosby... Crosby... Sorry, councillor, I hear you laughing about land contamination issues. That's very unfair and unfortunate of you, councillor Cook, to laugh at the issues that relate to land contamination in our city. Crosby Park was used during the Second World War by the US Chemical Warfare Service, producing protective and offensive items for the use in Second World War. Beneath the surface, there is a lot of materials that are buried just not far beneath the playing fields for one of the city's most popular rugby clubs that occasionally come to the surface. There are locations all across the city that have similar histories, where materials have been filled in. Oh, now you want to make a serious point, do you councillor Cook? Well, get up and talk in this debate. Get up and cook, talk in this debate.
Councillors, will we head in silence, please? Councillor McLaughlin.
The point I'm making is that there are officers of council who work extremely hard, doing hard yards on overcoming the sins of the past, and fixing up these issues, and it's covered in this programme, Contaminated Land Management. Councillor Shree knows well the issues that we have at West End with a former bitumen plant that we've been attempting to get the state government to contribute to over the years, so that that can be made good. And there are numerous sites across the city which have similar stories, where contamination has occurred. I just make a plea to councillors in this place that when they're talking to officers about the potential for community gardens, that's fantastic, but you do need to be aware that a lot of the sites that people choose, just because they're green on the surface doesn't mean there aren't contamination issues under the ground. And the officers who work in this space do a fantastic job to bring to your attention, bring to our attention, the issues that can relate to what's under the ground. It may be only a few inches, a few centimetres below the ground, it may be several metres below the ground, but there are leachate issues that arise from these past practices, and I recommend to everybody that they pay attention to the work that these officers do, and I commend them for it, and I commend the commitment of a budget to ongoing maintenance of these environmental health issues associated with the management of these sites. Mister Chair, there's been a fair bit of discussion this morning about the bushland acquisition programme, and I actually want to commend councillor Cumming for drawing attention to page two hundred and thirty-nine of the Budget Book, the Bushland Preservation Levy, Environmental Function, and he makes the point, and well-made, about what the bushland acquisition is for. In saying that there's a gap between the levy of revenue that comes in through the bushland acquisition levy and the purchase of properties, he misses the point that he actually made himself, and that is that the bushland acquisition levy can be used for a variety of things. That does include acquisition, of course it does, but it also includes the preservation of the lands that we have acquired. So, the Wipeout Weeds Programme, for example, is funded through the bushland acquisition levy, a very important function. So, and the other issue that relates to the purchase of land is that there's quite often a long period of time between when an area is identified as suitable for acquisition, negotiation with the owners of that land, negotiation with their lawyers, it's a real estate purchase that is gone through. So, the identification of an area for bushland acquisition through to the purchase, we don't do compulsory acquisition of land for bushland. It is by negotiation, and that's the point. So, to come in here and to suggest that there's something wrong with the revenue, with the flow of the revenue from the bushland acquisition levy through to the purchase of land entirely misses the point, and entirely misses the point that councillor Cumming made himself about what the land can be used for. He mentioned that he, Labour would make changes to the purpose of the bushland acquisition levy. Well, we look forward to seeing what they're actually proposing, because this is a very good function to allow for the preservation, restoration, rehabilitation, management and enhancement of the city's environment undertaken, or proposed to be undertaken by the council. What's he proposing to change? What is he proposing to change in here? We'd very much like to hear how he's going to change the use of the bushland acquisition levy. What is his purpose? We also know, Mister Chair, that over time, the areas of natural bushland that are still available for purchase under the bushland acquisition levy are increasingly harder and harder to find. And that's why I've been very pleased to see over recent years that we also look at sites that can be rehabilitated. Quite often, these are sites that are close to an existing bushland area or former farmland, or areas where we know there's the potential for habitat protection. So, we do acquire properties that may not have trees on them, shock horror. We may acquire properties that may not have trees on them, but can be rehabilitated to provide for natural habitat. And that's a good thing, and that's covered by the tenants of the bushland preservation levy, which councillor Cumming pointed to, precisely what it can be used for, and that's a good thing. A couple of other things I wanted to talk to quickly, if I may, in the time available Toomey, and that is a couple of things. So, we heard discussion about jacarandas, and I'll go to this issue. The Labour Party likes to point out that in the state's biodiversity responsibilities and the council's biodiversity responsibilities, there are identification of plants that can become weeds. And that list is a very long list, it contains hundreds of plants that potentially could become weeds. Jacarandas have been on that list, they have been on that list for a long time. We know, we know the game that the Labour Party plays in this place. Every time the jacarandas flower, every October, they say, 'Your administration wants to take, wants to take out jacarandas, you've added jacarandas to the list of weeds.' That's not true. They have been there. There are, every plant that has come into this country or is here naturally occurring has the potential to become a weed in the wrong environment. Camphoraceae are similarly on the list of introduced plants that can become weeds. Anybody who lives along a creek system in this city, Kedram Brook is a prime example, would have seen recently the magnificently flowering Japanese sunflowers, bright bushes of yellow flowers all along our creeks, introduced weed species. Any plant in the wrong location can become a weed. And that's why I commend this Lord Mayor for his commitment to planting jacarandas in appropriate locations. Recently, several jacarandas have been added to a park in my ward at Oriole Park that will be fantastic, but they have no capacity to get into the waterway system and to become a nuisance plant. The new park that we're creating at Ascot Park will have hundreds and hundreds of new trees planted, and several of those will be jacarandas as well, because there's no capacity for those trees in that location to become a weed species. So, let's end this little game that they play every year in October, when the jacarandas flower, to say, 'Your administration wants to take out jacarandas.' They've been on the list for a long time as a potential weed species, and it's our job, it's this administration's job, to make sure that they don't get away from us and get away in the waterways. And that's what the programme is about, to make sure that we manage all our natural environment areas. I also just wanted to quickly go to the issue of...
Councillor McLaughlin, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Are there further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mister Chair. I rise to speak on Programme Three, and I've been interested in the debates around environmental credentials and where this city's heading in terms of sustainability, and I thought these comments might be relevant, particularly to councillor Toomey, but also of interest to councillor Strunk and others. And I'm going to read a short excerpt from a piece by VJ Colin Jivadi, who's from the University of Quebec in Canada. The title of the article's a great one, if anyone's keen on reading it, it's called 'Why Hipster Vegan Green Tech Economy Is Not Sustainable', and I thoroughly recommend the piece. I won't read the whole thing, but he writes, 'Part of the conceit surrounding apolitical, techno-focused environmentalism centres on the idea of dematerialising economic growth through more efficient lifestyles and technologies. These include using the latest labour-saving apps on your phone, purchasing energy-saving appliances, eating vegan or organic food, and constructing buildings with lower negative environmental impact. While these improvements in efficiency should indeed be applauded, they are not a solution to the major environmental problems we face today. This is because such quick fixes derive from the economic and political structures of capital expansion. Growth-based economies are at the heart of environmental disasters we face today. Making our goods, economic activity or infrastructure greener and more efficient without a major overhaul of the global economic system is not a long-term solution. Improving efficiency would always involve maintaining and indeed expanding production to satisfy growing demand. This is reflected in the so-called Jevons paradox, named after the nineteenth-century English economist William Stanley Jevons, who discovered that increasing energy efficiency also led to high demand. Today, this rebound effect can be observed across economic sectors, as gains made due to enhanced efficiency are put back into use to fuel further growth. The higher efficiency of planes, cars and electronic devices is immediately offset by cheaper prices, resulting in an increase in demand and ultimately greater consumption of energy and resources. And within the globalised economic system we live in, the enhanced efficiency in one place often happens at the expense of growing inefficiency or waste in others. In other words, the more efficient we are, the cheaper consumption gets, and in an economy predicated on endless growth, the more we consume and waste. The environment will always be at the losing end of this logic.' And I think that critique is really important in the context of Programme Three, because this administration has been patting itself on the back about its environmental credentials, but many of the changes and reforms it's been introduced are largely tokenistic and meaningless. Having said that, there's also a lot of really good stuff in Programme Three, and I don't want to sound wholeheartedly negative, because I think there's some really good programmes in there, and I want to acknowledge the officers and the councillors who support those. But for those who are interested, here's a short, non-exhaustive list of other changes that I think this council administration could be making, particularly under Programme Three, that would greatly improve those goals of environmental sustainability. Number one is quite obvious: stop widening inroads to carry more cars, and put more of that money into bushland acquisition. Related to that, actively support the conversion of underutilized Bitchman Road Reserve into green space and garden beds. And I've raised this already with councillor Hammond, but I really hope that that suggestion is taken on board seriously. Obviously, offset carbon emissions directly through local projects, rather than relying so heavily on overseas carbon offset programmes, where the positive impacts are uncertain and difficult to quantify accurately. Scale down operations at St Lucia Golf Course and convert more of the site into bushland reserve. Stop rezoning bushland and farmland for suburban sprawl. Stop approving new commercial developments within the biodiversity overlay, particularly along sensitive creek corridors like Norman Creek. Stop allowing developers to remove established street trees simply because they're in the way of a new construction project. Loosen planning and lease restrictions that make it unnecessarily difficult for community groups to install solar panels on council facilities. Start buying back inner-city industrial land along the riverfront to reconnect fragmented wildlife corridors. And again, councillor Hammond, this is on your radar, but those sites cannot sit there forever. Support the installation of off-grid solar-powered lighting in parks, rather than expensive mains-connected lighting that involves extensive trenching and disruption. Improve regulation and enforcement of erosion and sediment control from construction sites and industrial land uses to stop the pollution of our waterways. Increase public funding for the Oxley Creek transformation so that it does not need to be commercialised and privatised in order to cover costs. Allocate more funding to implement future stages of the Norman Creek vision, particularly in Woolen Gaba and East Brisbane. Ban single-use plastics, such as disposable plastic cutlery and packaging, from all council-funded programmes and events. Loosen the excessive policy restrictions on verge gardens and community gardens. Install protected bike lanes along major roads, rather than clearing trees to push them through sensitive habitat areas and green corridors. Mandate the inclusion of greywater recycling, rainwater capture, on-site composting or organic waste management in all multi-res developments. And this last one is arguably slightly outside the programme, but I think it relates directly, which is increase the proportion of deep planting as part of new developments. And that commitment from the previous Lord Mayor is starting to feel a little bit like a broken promise, because we've been waiting a very long time, and we still haven't seen enough action on that front. But that's not an exhaustive list, there's a lot more this administration could be doing, and I think if there was a genuine commitment towards environmental sustainability, we could make some big gains in this city for relatively little cost. I wanted to use the rest of my time now to speak about a few specific projects and issues that are of particular concern to me, and the first is around the Victoria Park vision or master plan, and through you, Mister Chair, to the Lord Mayor, please take this recommendation and suggestion seriously. That site is obviously, has a lot of historical significance to the Aboriginal community. One of the main reasons it remains as green space is that it was one of the last big campsites for Aboriginal people of the Brisbane region, and that, as you're aware, there were murders and a few massacres on that site, and refugees from the invasion remained on that site as the city expanded nearby. And so, I think it is essential, essential, that before any significant decisions are made about the future of that site, we conduct a detailed Aboriginal Cultural Heritage survey. That's something that needs to be, to happen soon, and it should happen as part, before the main public consultation starts. Because if we go out to the public and say, 'Oh, we're thinking about this, what do you think of that?', but the public doesn't have access to that important information about what the Aboriginal community wants and sees as important and historically significant, we're going to be barking up the wrong tree, where we make decisions and get residents excited about certain options, and then realise later, 'Oh, we can't do that here, because that was a massacre site.' And so, it's really important that that Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Survey and that historical mapping happens as a priority as part of the Victoria Park Golf Course. I'm emphasising this because I think this administration wants to do the right thing on these issues, and I'm urging you to not overlook this and deprioritise it. It's something that needs to be properly funded and the subject of broad consultation with the Aboriginal community. I also just want to, again, rehash the importance of acquiring some of those big industrial sites in West End for green space as soon as possible. They're on the local government infrastructure plan, they're waiting for funding, the owners aren't going to sell in a hurry, they're just happy to... The owners aren't going to sell in a hurry, they're just happy to sit there and wait for their land values to rise and rise and rise. And they're going to keep waiting unless we force them out of there. And so it's completely up to you councillor Hammond, the time is now. Our population has increased dramatically. The Gabbaward has increased in population by around, somewhere around five or six thousand residents in the last couple of years. And in that time, we've had one very small new park at the corner of Vulture Street and Thomas Street. It's like the size of a tennis court. And then we've had a very slight expansion to Carl Street Park down in Wollongaba, which is again about the size of two house lots. So we've had thousands and thousands of additional residents. The equivalent of a whole suburban suburb has moved into the Gabbaward. And we've had, I see some councillors raising their eyebrows, check the figures, that's exactly what's happened. And we've had thousands and thousands of residents move into those inner-city suburbs. They don't have backyards of their own, they're living in apartments and other high-density living styles. So they are even more dependent on public parkland than people out in the suburbs. That's what I'm saying here, is that people living in apartments have greater needs for green space than people who live in detached dwellings with their own private backyards. It's common sense when you think about it. But at the moment, we are still putting nowhere near enough money into delivering public green space, not just in my ward but also in the Paddington Ward, in Central Ward, in Walter Taylor Ward, in all those densifying inner-city areas. We need to be buying more land for inner-city green space so that high-density living is a livable choice for people. If we want people to live close to where they work and live in those dense environments, we have to be providing the green space in community facilities to make that an attractive choice. And right now, we are failing to do so. Populations have grown at a much faster rate than the provision of green space and it's a real problem for this city, not just now, but it's going to get worse in the future. So I really want to emphasise that this council needs to be buying more land for inner-city green space and not just converting existing golf courses and existing sports fields into parkland, as positive as that may be. Just finally, I want to-
councillor Shree, your time has expired. Further speakers? councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for morning tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks, that this council now adjourn for a period of 15 minutes for the purpose of morning tea, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
The contrary, no? The ayes have it.
Welcome back from morning tea everyone. For those who are interested, I have turned the temperature warmer ever so slightly for those who were interested in that sort of thing. Further speakers, councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on Programme Three, Clean, Green and Sustainable City. Team Shunner administration are committed to ensuring Brisbane achieves its vision of being a world leader in sustainability as set out in council's plan, Brisbane Clean, Green, Sustainable 2017 to 2031. Brisbane city is our new world city and it's renowned nationally and for that matter internationally for its livability and successful blending of urban and natural environments that is defined by its subtropical climate and diverse natural environment. The Pullumvale ward is a standout example of the meandering Brisbane River, waterways that weave through our leafy suburbs, the rich biodiversity in our natural areas and accessible and diverse parks enjoyed by residents and visitors. All contribute significantly to our city's economy and livability. As the local councillor for the Pullumvale ward, where city, living meets country lifestyle, this ward truly is the green heart to the lungs of the city and its agricultural, rural land, substantial parks, conservation reserves, forests and vegetation that is bountiful in this ward. It is significant to the leisure and lifestyle opportunities for the residents and visitors to the ward and the future generation of Brisbane peoples. As I mentioned many times before in this place, and I'm very proud to represent the Pullumvale ward, being 318 square kilometres, which in other terms is equivalent to nine and three-quarter wards can fit into this city's crown of being the only country lifestyle ward in the city of Brisbane. Because of this ward's noteworthy vegetation types, the need is greater for many of the services under this Programme Three, which not only benefits the local Pullumvale ward residents, it also serves the second most visited site in Brisbane being Mount Cootha Forest Park with over 750,000 visitors plus a year. Projects like bushland acquisition programme, conservation reserves management programme, environmental offsets and natural areas risk management are but a few of the projects delivered in the Pullumvale ward. Which I just want to go back and, you know, refer to some comments that were made yesterday, Mr Chair, in particular about the residents' bushland fund, that $73 million had been raised and expended. With that $70 million spent in the LMP wards, yet $3 million only spent in the ALP wards, which was mentioned yesterday by the Maruka councillor, councillor Griffiths. Just want to hold up the map and the boundaries of the city of Brisbane, not the clearest picture, but I'm sure we all know what it looks like. And when you have a good look at it, a really good look at it, you'll see that there's significant green space within our boundary. And using some common sense, there's a lot of urban density, which covers a lot of our wards. So where else would you buy bushland? That's not contaminated land, that's not owned by the state who want to sell it at commercial rates. But significant vegetation or land space that we could then offset due tree planting. I'll give you an example, John Sprent Reserve, over 50 years ago, Professor John Sprent purchased some land in Moghl and that land was desolate. It used to be a dairy farm. You go there today, under the guise of Sally Anne Atkinson who bought it, but also it was the first landfill wildlife site, it's now fully vegetated. Now that is the achievement that we want to achieve, a significant vegetation across this city. And as I mentioned when I opened this, the ward of Pullumvale certainly is the majority percentage of biodiversity. It is the one that carries this city to get its green credentials up. But if we look at this map, you can still see the shaded green that shows the land space that's been purchased by this city. But you can also see the land space that is still significantly green-vegetated, which is not your Marukas. It's not your Chelmas, it's not your other city areas. But I want to clear that up about the Chelma statement is that, you know, today we heard a motion come through, but it was referring to funding that's not part of the bushland acquisition programme funding. It was part of the funding for flood buyback. That's dealing with properties that are significantly flooded consistently through the times of the river that we live on, that will always flood Brisbane city. We cannot put so much infrastructure into a city to stop a river from flooding. I've worked 20 years in construction, I've worked right around the nation and internationally, there is nowhere that you can buy more land back to stop it from flooding because it is a natural waterway. It does what it does and that's why it's there. Now, one of the other interesting facts that was, or should I say, Tinkerbell dust, I think we heard those fables yesterday quite a few times. Maybe I should use one too councillor Cook, how about Little Red Riding Hood and the big bad wolf? LMP are the ones trying to save the city and create the green space. The stories from our big bad wolf, our red people over there, are the ones telling the people in our city, we're doing the wrong thing. We are not using that $73 million wisely. What a load of bunkum. So if we want to play stories, let's play the Little Red Riding Hood one. Because the reality is, there is money going into other wards, wards where we're looking to build sporting precincts. Specifically councillor Griffiths Ward, Maruka, the Polaro District Sports Park, it'll be 12.95 hectares. Council currently owns half at $6.4 million. Another site of 1.6187 hectares will come into council's ownership on the 9th of September this year at a cost of $2.5 million. With the estimated remaining three lots of land could cost anywhere to the point of $7.5 or above million. So I say to the other side of chambers, let's talk the right talk, let's tell exactly what's going on. It's great to use the information you receive through questions on notice and information you use in committees. But again, throwing the fairy dust this direction will throw it straight back. We've got the evidence, you've only got to go look at your own access to near maps to see how much green space is in this city. And again, see how much is actually being procured by Brisbane and how much offset tree planning is occurring in these reserves. I'll use another example, Ensted Bushland Reserve, Tombley-on-Trees site, you go out there today, there is so much vegetation there, but there's so many more wildlife that's moving into that area. So I stand here and wonder, what is the objective of the other side of the chamber? Telling stories we've heard, but how can you ridicule credentials that if you go out to these land spaces and you see the evidence, you see where the residents' money's gone and you can see the vegetation coming back? Why are the people of Brisbane and the visitors to this city continually keep going out to do mountain bike riding in Mount Cootha, using Lake Manchester, going out to Kolo, go to Dandies Rangers? And I can keep listing the green spaces that connect the Western Corridor through into the urban density of this city. So I say to the other side of the chambers, get out and have a look at the green space, talk to the reality of what's really out there. It's appalling that the work that our council officers do to plant these trees to give us greater lungs to our city, that you cannot give them the credit for the work that they've done. So, Mr Chair, I'll continue with outcome 3.1, sustainable and resilient communities. And listed in the projects in this outcome are significantly community deliverables for the Pullumvale ward. As the ward is within the five to 20 kilometre radius of the CBD of Brisbane, the diversity of the landscape to the resilience of community members is captivating and certainly awe inspiring. This area to the west of the city has experienced severe weather extremes, from flooding, isolation to impacts of lack of water for cattle, agricultural and acreage needs. Yet it is the Pullumvale ward residents' resilience in the tough times, the community spirit, the extraordinary volunteerism of giving back yet paying it forward for future generations that is so unique to this country urban ward. Community is at the heart of Brisbane, it's our resilience, inclusive, cohesive, ability to prepare, respond to and recover from varying weather impacts. The community in the Pullumvale ward are looking forward to the combined activities delivered under service item 3.1.1.1 in engagement for a clean, green city. It's the volunteers through our partnerships programmes under service item 3.1.1.2, Partnerships for a Clean, Green City, is key to the Shunner administration's team's vision. To protect and restore our biodiversity, consolidate and connect habitats by partnering effectively with residents, private landholders, community groups, activities are significant in the ward. I would like to public acknowledge the council officers of Asset Services West, Natural Environment, Habitat Brisbane and the LandforWildlife teams. Your passion, heart and soul that you proudly contribute to our community certainly does not go unnoticed. My personal thanks, gratitude and acknowledgement to each of you for your contribution to the ward of Pullumvale.
Councillor Richards, your time has expired.
I commend this programme to the chamber.
Further speakers?
Lord Mayor. Thank you. I'm particularly excited to be able to work with the team and in particular councillor Hammond, to deliver a cleaner, greener and more sustainable city through the continuing work in this programme. It is really important to our agenda as a team, this programme is, and I'm excited by many of the new initiatives in this programme. Initiatives like the Hanlon Park work at Stones Corner that sees what is effectively a drain converted back into a natural creek. Which sees new facilities invested in for the local community to enjoy, whether they're park facilities, sporting facilities or bikeways. This will make a real big impact, a positive impact in that part of Brisbane and will be available for people from all parts of Brisbane to enjoy and use. This programme also funds the construction of the Boondle Wetlands Environment Centre, another great initiative in, not an LMP ward that I understand, but in a Labor ward. We're delivering on the Oxley Creek Transformation Programme, especially the Archerfield Wetlands project, which is really, really exciting. Is that in an LMP ward?
No.
No, it is not. In fact, we're creating a massive new public space available for the community in a Labor ward that will benefit not only those local residents but people right across Brisbane. We're also creating the newest and biggest public park that the city has seen in 50 years, which is incredibly exciting and that's the Victoria Park vision. This one in particular has, for me, I found this process very interesting, from when we first announced it just recently, to see the community's incredibly positive response. But then to see the opposition's response, which has been incredibly confusing. On the day it was announced, we had councillor Cook in the Brisbane Times saying the plan was welcomed by Labor councillors. So on the 9th of June, it was reported in the Brisbane Times that Labor councillors welcomed this plan and councillor Cook said it was a good idea. They were in fact trying to claim the credit for this plan. Yet, a couple of hours later, they were busy bagging it. Why? Is because they changed their mind about whether it was a good plan or not? No. Pure party politics. When it comes to a choice for Labor councillors between people and party politics, they always choose party politics. And the Victoria Park vision is the classic example of that. And so now their approach, once again, is focused on party politics, which is trying to gag council from communicating with residents about this project. They made it clear, their one focus is not what's going to be in the park, not how it will benefit Brisbane residents, but, oh, we've got to stop council sending out any information on this park. We've got to stop council advertising this park and promoting it so that the people of Brisbane get to know about it. Labor's focus is purely party political. And they're still mumbling right now. Is there any party political communication that council is doing on Victoria Park? Has anyone seen any party political communication on Victoria Park?
Not at all.
No.
Why are you going to say that?
And I challenge Labor councillors, if you see anything party political, by all means, bring it to me. There will not be any party political communication funded by ratepayers on Victoria Park. Is this a party political project? No, it's not. It's a budgeted project of council. Is this an election commitment? No, it's not. It's a budgeted project of council. And so we will be communicating with people about it because we need people to be involved in the process going forward. And they can't be involved if they don't know about the project. They can't get excited if they don't know about the project. And we will make sure that people get the opportunity to get involved and to be involved in the community consultation, in the design outcomes for what is a truly landmark, city changing opportunity. The creation of new publicly accessible parkland. Now, there has been some commentary that, oh, it's already your park. There is a difference councillor Johnston, between a golf course and a park.
That's right.
There is a big difference between a golf course and a park councillor Johnston. And if you don't understand that, I think you need to go back to school.
Councillors will be heard in silence.
Because
Lord Mayor.
I wouldn't feel comfortable taking my kids to go down to the Victoria Park golf course. Right now, with golf balls flying everywhere, there is a big difference between a golf course and a park. And so we will be opening it up to everyone, not just to one group, not just to one sport, but to everyone. And that's what the people of Brisbane expect us to do. Now, I know that there will be certain groups that have a strong view on this project one way or another. And I can give the commitment to the people of Brisbane that we are 100% committed to this park. We are 100% committed to making it happen. And while those groups have a right to have their say, and I would encourage them to have their say, we will be making sure that this is a park for all, a park for everyone, a park for people right across Brisbane. And we are committed to making that happen. So council, the council opposition can continue their party political lines that they're trying to push. They can continue to try to gag council from communicating with residents, but in the end, once again, it's all about party politics. And that is disappointing, but it is what we have come to expect from Labor. Why did they do that? Because there was an election coming up and in true Labor form, not about the people of Brisbane, it's about party politics. And so-
Councillors will be heard in silence, please.
And so when the bushland acquisition programme was introduced by the Liberal Lord Mayor and the Liberal administration at the time, Labor opposed it and they called it a new tax. Now, surprise, surprise, after they had successfully won the election, what did they do? Did they abolish this new tax? No, they increased this new tax. I've never seen a new tax that Labor doesn't love. And so in true Labor form, they not only ran with it, they increased it. And they were boasting about increasing it earlier today. They love a good new tax and rather than playing politics and abolishing it like they implied they would when they voted against it, they kept it and they increased it. That's Labor's record. But- But thankfully, thankfully, the bushland acquisition programme has continued to go from strength to strength. And so while it's been invested in by successive administrations, what we are seeing at the moment is the first ever accelerated bushland acquisition programme. And we committed to purchasing 750 hectares of at-risk bushland in the full year term. We are already up to 700 hectares, thanks to the work of councillor Hammond and also councillor McLaughlin before her. So we're almost at that target. I'm confident we will get to that target. And that is the first time ever we have seen an accelerated bushland acquisition programme in this form. It's interesting because I was having a look at Labor's last budget and, you know, there's a few things that pop out of this. The first thing is the, how little information is in here. And when you flick through it, most of the pages are half blank as well. There's like a lot of blank spaces in here.
Your time has expired.
Oh.
Further speakers? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, I'm going to start with this programme is delivering a cleaner, greener city for us all. I want to thank councillor Cummings for his speech that he started with very early on saying, nobody likes a winja. Because no one does like a winja. So as I was listening to the debate today, I decided I'd do a winja meter. So the winner of that winja meter will be the last person that I speak about today. Councillor Cummings, you said there's nothing new in this portfolio, in this budget. I think you're actually referring to your own speech because you recycle that speech year after year. So the only thing without imagination or vision or whatever is yourself. This side of the chamber, you also said about jacarandas. You don't even know that we have a Jacaranda Jazz Festival in New Farm Park. So you said you were going to do something about celebrating jacarandas. Well, again, that's not new because we have the Jacaranda Jazz Festival. Councillor Cassidy, you misled the chamber when you were going on about how much ALP, they spent more money than ever before on bushland acquisition and all that kind of jazz that you went on about. Well, on average through the ALP era in this chamber, they bought 60 hectares of land a year. 60. It wasn't until Campbell Newman came into this place where he fast-tracked the acquisition to 500 hectares a year. In a term, four-year term. But we're doing better under councillor, Lord Mayor Shrinna. We're actually purchasing 750 hectares of bushland. 750 in four years. So when councillor Cassidy turned around and said they bought so much more, they were so much better back in their heyday, it was 60 hectares on average a year. 60. Bushland across our city, as councillor Richard said, is more in Callanvale Ward, at your ward councillor Richards, there's a bit in councillor McLaughlin's. We buy the bushland where it is. But I also want to say councillor Cassidy, thank you so much for your wisdom. Thank you very much for putting the new state policy of buying state government land for $1. We welcome that because the one that the Maruka Ward councillor was talking about, the Tuie Forest, we've actually written to the state about this land and they came back and said full commercial value. So councillor Cassidy, I would love you to go and speak to Minister Bailey.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, remarks should be directed through the chair, not to individual councillors.
Thank you councillor Johnston. Councillor Hammond, carry on.
There's no show without punch, as my grandmother used to say. So, but anyway, so councillor Cassidy, through the chair, I welcome you to go and speak to Minister Bailey because there is lots of state government land that we would be interested to purchase at $1, as you so proudly stated in your speech today. Where it's a little bit different, they go on about koalas and everything else. But when we tried to buy the property at 818 Rhodey Road in councillor Davis's area, we tried to purchase that land for $4 million through the bushland acquisition. I've spoken about this area before because it flows on and connects to the Raven Street Reserve. It's a very important piece of land that flows on to what we've got in native wildlife with the koalas, the kangaroos and all the bird life that's there. The Labor state government refused to sell it to council. Instead, they did their cash cow grab and sold it to the highest bidder, a private developer. Now, we're actually seeing a development application that's on this property that council rejected. The state Labor government pulled that application in and said, yep, 80% of koala habitat can go. They fully support 80% of koala habitat. Now, I'm going to make sure with councillor Davis that everybody in that MacDowell area knows what the state government have done here because we are not going to take responsibility for those 80% of bushland that's going to disappear because of the Australian Labor Party. We are proud on this side of the chamber that we maintain and upgrade over 2,100 parks. But that's not all. We've got the $20 million of the Future Fund that we're going to be buying more and upgrading more parks with that money. This side of the chamber is determined to buy more parkland and more bushland for the future of Brisbane. Now, I've come to the winner of the winja meter. I don't think it will come to too much surprise to anybody because this person spoke about pork barreling and basically that's what his speech and woe is, nothing happens in the ALP wards and, oh my goodness, yes, you fixed it. But let me just go through the budget because, and I want all the LMP councillors in this chamber. Oh no, he's booking his overseas holiday. That's what he does every Thursday at the end of budget. So he's outside doing that, but-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Shrinna.
Just checking with you whether you feel that sort of comment is appropriate.
It was probably a little gratuitous.
If it's truthful, it's- Anyway, so can I just say, LMP councillors, please do not get envy and jealousy of the councillor for Maruka. Please, let me just go through. Now, I'll do this quite slowly so everyone can hear. When I can find my little Maruka stash here. Okay, Tuie Forest Park, there's 87,000, that's 3.3.1.1, there's 87,000 loaded in the budget. In 3.3.3.1, park development and enhancements, Maruka Ward, Beryl Roberts Park, 97,000. Burnley Street Park, Rockleigh, $54,000. 3.3.3.2, there's money in there for Acacia, so it's Marham Street, Acacia, $70,000. Paradise Road Park, Polara, and that's 70,000 there. 3.3.3.2, park maintenance and renewal, he's getting an upgrade to the toilets, which he spoke to me about and I know he's very, very happy about that. 3.3.3.2, Alexander Park, Maruka, 11,000. Beryl Roberts Park, again, 108,000. 3.3.3.2, parks maintenance and renewal. Pegs Park, Maruka, 81,000. And of course, I spoke about the toilet refurbishment, which is 235,000 there. 3.4.1.4, improving the health and livability of our waterways. Maruka Ward in Rocky Waterholes, Salisbury, $611,000. Service 3.4.3.3, drainage. Douglas Road, out there, $396,000. 3.4.3.4, planned for future infrastructure. There's money in there for Sweets Road, Polara, $402,000. 3.4.4.2, maintaining waterway vegetation. We've got Evans Road, $19,000, Gray Street, $21,000. But no, 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 it gets better because he said that there's nothing that gets spent in his ward. No land is bought in his ward. I think we heard that, did we not? Well, councillor Griffiths, we had purchased 6.4, sorry, 6.47 hectares in Polara for the new sports facility that we're doing, for $6.4 million with an additional 1.6 hectare settling on the 9th of September for $2.5 million. And yet, there is more, more for Polara, that land is being purchased by this administration. Which, the new land that we're looking at purchasing is estimated for a $7.5 million purchase, an investment into open space, parkland, sports in Polara, in the Maruka Ward. So that's an investment-
Councillor Hammond, your time has expired.
Oh, shame.
Councillors, I'll now put the motion for the adoption of the Clean, Green and Sustainable City Programme. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Called by councillor Burke and the deputy mayor. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Attentive, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 25 in favour and one against.
The ayes have it. Please return to your chairs. Councillor Burke, could you please present the next programme, Future Brisbane?
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move for the services of the council, the allocations for the operation of the projects for the years 1920, 2021, 2022 and 2023, and the rolling projects for the Future Brisbane Programme as set out on pages 71 to 82, so far as they relate to Programme 4 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Toomey, that for the services of council, the allocations for the operations and projects for the years 2019, 20, 2021, 2021, 22 and 2022, 23, and the rolling projects for the Future Brisbane Programme as set out on pages 71 to 82, so far as they relate to Programme 4 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Burke?
Thank you very much, Mr Chair, and I rise to support the 1920 council budget that's handed down by Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna as his first budget, a budget that continues to deliver on this administration's commitment to build and protect for our city, to build the infrastructure that needs to be delivered and to protect the lifestyle that makes our city such a great place to live. And in Programme 4, Mr Chair, again, like other programmes which have already been debated, we deliver on that commitment to the people of Brisbane. We are building and protecting the infrastructure, the lifestyle choices that our residents want to see, while also protecting the livability of our city through our planning scheme and our Development Services branch. Mr Chairman, this is a commitment that this administration has long had with the people of Brisbane. Through Plan Your Brisbane and Brisbane's Future Blueprint, we listened and engaged with the residents of Brisbane about how they would like to see their city grow and develop in the coming years. This hasn't been some road to Damascus conversion, as some people would like to put, Mr Chairman, but indeed an engaging process that started right back with Lord Mayor Campbell Newman in 2005, 2006 with the city shape process. It has been an ongoing engagement and commitment by this side of the chamber to listen to residents, to take on board their views and to respond and to deliver on their requirements and needs for our city and to take our city forward, Mr Chairman, and we have done that. And in this budget, the 1920 council budget, through all of the programmes, but in Programme 4, we do it again, Mr Chairman, by making sure that we are delivering on what our residents would like to see happening around our city when it comes to improvements of public space, but also responding to their concerns when it comes to development as well, Mr Chairman. And so it's pleasing that in Programme 4, in 4.1.1.1, Strategic Land Use Planning, we continue to invest into the Brisbane City Plan 2014. Of course, this was the first of its kind interactive document done by a local government when it comes to a planning scheme, Mr Chairman. And to keep it modern and up to date, we need to continue to invest into the planning scheme itself. We need to make sure that it reflects changes that have been made to our city plan, that we have the information in formats that are able to be accessible by all people and also that we have the ability to provide the strategic advice that needs to be provided, not just to applicants or residents, but also in responding to requests by the state government and other entities when it comes to planning scheme issues. This particular service will also fund the assessment that needs to be carried out when we receive ministerial designations on blocks of land across the city, Mr Chairman. And what we know is that we are seeing an increased number of ministerial designations coming into this council seeking advice back to the state government about those. We also see, Mr Chairman, a number of planning scheme changes that are coming through. There are currently nine major amendments to the planning scheme that are underway. And again, this service line funds the work that needs to be undertaken to deliver on these planning amendments for our city. It also helps fund the future amendments that will be carried out as part of our Brisbane industrial strategy, which has come out after consultation with the residents of Brisbane and with industry about how we protect and ensure that we have key employment nodes across our city well into the future. Mr Chairman, we've done all of this while engaging with the residents of Brisbane and listening to their concerns and taking on board their feedback. On top of that, Mr Chairman, we know that the South East Queensland Regional Plan plays a major role in how we deliver local planning across our council area. Residents and the whole council chamber would know that we have a target. The target is 188,000 new dwellings inside the city of Brisbane by 2041. And that is why we have to make sure that we are rolling out and conducting the neighbourhood planning process across this city, Mr Chairman. And we continue that and that investment in this year's budget through the work that we're undertaking, Mr Chairman, to deliver two new neighbourhood plans in the 1920 year, but also to make sure that we're continuing the existing neighbourhood plans that are currently underway, Mr Chairman. So currently, the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan, which came to council for adoption at the last council meeting, the Banyo Northgate Neighbourhood Plan, the Sandgate and Districts Neighbourhood Plan and the Eight Mile Plains Neighbourhood Plan, Mr Chairman, both of which were part of the commitment in the 1819 financial year. There is and has been a change though, Mr Chairman, as was pointed out by the leader of the opposition. There is and has been a change though, Mister Chairman, as was pointed out by the leader of the opposition in his budget speech about the funding for neighbourhood plans. Uh, that's because, Mister Chairman, there's been a number of neighbourhood plans that finally received endorsement from the state and could progress through the adoption process. So the Spring Hill Neighbourhood Plan, the Newstead North Neighbourhood Plan, the Dutton Park Fairfield Neighbourhood Plan, the Ferney Grove, the Kedron Neighbourhood Plan, the Gap Neighbourhood Plan and the Cooperuon Districts Neighbourhood Plan have all been finalised in the, uh, eighteen nineteen financial year, Mister Chairman. Uh, and that is great to see that the state has finally worked with us to see those neighbourhood plans completed. And so, it was with great, uh, pleasure, I was able to announce as part of the budget information sessions, Mister Chairman, uh, that we will be undertaking the two new neighbourhood plans. Uh, one on a site that we have not announced yet, uh, on the north side, but we did announce as part of the, uh, budget information sessions that we will be undertaking a neighbourhood plan for the Maruka, Salisbury and Nathan suburbs in the city of Brisbane. Uh, Mister Chairman, these are some of the, uh, oldest, uh, neighbourhood plan parts of the city that we have, uh, particularly in the Maruka and Salisbury area. And indeed, for the suburb of Nathan, there is no neighbourhood plan at all. Uh, but we have seen in the last twelve months, a significant amount of development interest in the suburb of Nathan. Uh, one very large controversial development application and then one land sale by the state government of Koala Bushland, Mister Chairman, uh, where they are trying to flog it off to the highest bidder. Uh, and so it is a great opportunity, uh, through this neighbourhood plan, Mister Chairman, uh, to actually, uh, now go and do a planning, uh, process across Maruka, Salisbury and the suburb of Nathan, so that the residents can have their say, so that their input can be taken on board and a planning, planning amendment can be put forward that reflects how those communities would like to grow and change going forward into the future. Maruka and Salisbury are major employment nodes. They create and generate massive economic growth for our city, but they are also feeling the pressures of urban growth across the city as well, Mister Chairman. And that's why this is a great location to conduct a new neighbourhood plan in the city. On top of that, uh, Mister Chairman, the Lord Mayor announced the New Suburban Renewal Task Force. So unlike some of the debate that we've had from those opposite, uh, where they seem to try to peddle this myth about this administration only being city focused, uh, Mister Chairman, nothing can be further from the truth. All you have to do is go through the schedules and see the range of projects that are being delivered right across this city, uh, out into the suburbs, and you would be completely baffled by the statements by the Australian Labor Party councils. One of these great projects that are being delivered by, uh, this administration is a new suburban renewal task force, to take on the same challenge that the urban renewal task force led by Trevor Radcliffe did back in the early nineteen nineties, where we saw parts of this city transformed from disused industrial and underutilized land into vibrant parts of our new Brisbane city. And so five hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been allocated and serviced four point two point one point one for its new suburban renewal task force. And I was very pleased, uh, as part of the budget information sessions, to be able to announce that Maruka would be the first pilot location for this suburban renewal task force. There are a lot of challenges in Maruka, so not just are we going to be undertaking the neighbourhood plan, but we are also going to be looking at what opportunities there are to unlock regeneration in that part of the city, Mister Chairman. If you can think of a classic example, as the Lord Mayor said in his budget speech, of Nunda. The bypass that now goes under Nunda revitalized that shopping precinct. It took a number of years for the potential and the growth to happen around that major hub there, but the, the catalyst project, Mister Chairman, that actually unlocked that change and that revitalization of the shopping precinct and that whole suburb was the bypass and the major change in the transport network. For New Farm, it was the sewer upgrade. And that fifty million dollar investment that actually unlocked the revitalization of the New Farm and Tenner Reef precinct in our city as well. So Mister Chairman, we'll be working very hard with the residents, with the landowners down there, the commercial landowners as well, to look at what opportunities are there to make sure that we can deliver some great and fantastic outcomes as part of this new suburban renewal task force. That's just one way, Mister Chairman, that we're supporting small business through Programme Four. Another way that we are getting on with the job and supporting and helping small business across this city, Mister Chairman, is by delivering village precinct projects. Uh, we are getting on with the job of rolling out VPPs across the city, uh, with this year, uh, a number of them already under construction and some soon to be complete, Mister Chairman. Uh, and so it was my pleasure as part of the budget pro, uh, budget information sessions to announce the next round of VPPs that would be being rolled out, uh, in the nineteen twenty year and also the investigations uh, that were being undertaken in the nineteen twenty year, so Corrie Street, Cherm Side, Boundary Street, South Brisbane, Boondle, uh, the Sandgate Road precinct up in Boondle, Martha Street at Camp Hill and the old Cleveland Road and Saint Leonard's Street in Cooperu precinct, which was a subject to a significant building fire, uh, not too long ago, Mister Chairman. They are all going to be subject to investigation for a future village precinct project, uh, on top of the ones that are going to be delivered, Mister Chairman, as part of the nineteen twenty financial year. So the Corso at Seven Hills, Station Road at Sunnybank, Kenrose Street, Carina, Railway Parade at Dara and that fantastic little shopping precinct in councillor Toomey's ward, uh, on Waterworks Road there at Ash Grove, Mister Chairman. Uh, and these are vital projects to revitalize some of our key strip shopping precincts across the city, Mister Chairman. We, as the party of the best friend of small business in this city, not only with our reductions in fees and charges for small businesses through our village precinct projects, through our suburban renewal task force, want to see small businesses thrive, Mister Chairman. They are the lifeblood of a city, they are the lifeblood of each community. Having a vibrant shopping precinct reduces the need for people to drive their cars. It encourages people to be more healthy and more active by providing a range of choices close, in close proximity to where they live, Mister Chairman. And that is why we continue to invest in these important projects right across the city. We also, Mister Chairman, invest in important projects to, uh, lift up areas, to create a sense of place, Mister Chairman, through our City of Lights project and also Brisbane Canvas. And so Brisbane Canvas continues in the nineteen twenty year, as well as our sponsorship and ongoing work with the Brisbane Street Art Festival, Mister Chairman, to make sure that we have vibrant public art across this city, as well as our public art in Public Spaces Programme, Mister Chairman, uh, where we continue to invest in prominent sculptures and statues and other pieces of art to highlight local areas and local communities. But it's this City of Lights project that I wanted just to touch on, Mister Chairman, because, uh, I found it really interesting in some of the debate we had a little bit earlier, uh, where councillor Griffiths was decrying that if he saw another set of fairy lights in a tree, it would be just the end of the world. He could not possibly go on if there was another set of fairy lights in a tree, Mister Chairman. Not the view he held this financial year, Mister Chairman, when of course, council through our City of Lights project went down to Moor Vale Lane and Maruka Ward and did a City of Lights project down there. Um, of course, when he's getting one of those, it's fine. But if anyone else would possibly get a City of Lights project, it's got to be the end of the world, Mister Chairman, uh, and could not possibly go on. Um, so we will continue this important project because it does create places for communities to gather. It creates a sense of place as well. It highlights local history and it highlights activities in the community, provides the traders in those areas uh, with a night time economy and a more friendly and more welcoming experience for their particular customers. Uh, and so, uh, I'm pleased to announce that as part of the City Lights, it's not the, not the only project, Mister Chairman, uh, but council will be looking at High Street in Tuwong. Uh, this is a very important part of the city of Brisbane's history. It was the first highway in the city. Um, and that short section of, uh, Porferry Rock Garden Beds in the middle of High Street at Tuwong was meant to be the start of something much bigger, Mister Chairman. Uh, there are some significant trees in there, uh, and we will look at how we can improve and create a entryway into the city as part of, uh, this space there in High Street at Tuwong. On top of that, Mister Chairman, this administration has a proud track record of leading the way in Australian firsts. Uh, we were the largest purchaser of green power. We are the largest carbon neutral certified organization in Australia, Mister Chairman. And as part of this budget, we become the first and largest council to recognize that universal housing is an issue that our communities face and something that we need to do more to help and support those people in our community with. And that is why this Lord Mayor and this administration in this year's budget has a universal housing commitment. That commitment is a rebate scheme to help make universal housing something that we see right across this city, not just in isolated pockets. To help those that need accessible housing, that need changes done to housing to suit their changing circumstances, whether it's a disability or old age, have those choices and those options and aren't forced out of our city, Mister Chairman. And so a rebate scheme will be implemented as part of this budget to support the development of new housing stock that meets the livable standards, livable housing standards of a gold standard, Mister Chairman. On top of that, this administration is committing to changing our city plan to reflect a new silver standard as the guideline for multiple unit dwellings, rooming and accommodation and a number of other housing types across this city. Mister Chairman, Programme Four delivers on our commitment to build and protect for the residents of Brisbane and I commend Programme Four to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, um, uh, councillor Shree.
I'll rise, rise to speak on, um, item four and I, um, I was struggling to, um, think about how to frame my comments today because I, I don't like being relentlessly negative. Um, and I, I try to subscribe to that view that if you don't have anything nice to say, it's better, um, not to say anything at all. So that's always ve- very difficult for me in conversations around this budget programme because I've been consistently disappointed in this council's, um, poor approach to planning and, and government, governance more generally. Um, I mentioned earlier the frustrations around the open, uh, the, the deep planting requirements for major new developments and it would be good to hear from councillor Burke, um, through you, Mister Chair, in his summing up comments where that's at. Um, we've seen some of those other, um, changes that were announced as part, as part of the Future Brisbane process brought through, uh, a lot sooner and I'm feeling really frustrated that this change, which I see as one of the most important ones, to require developers to provide more green space and include more deep planted trees within new development projects. I'm very frustrated that that still doesn't seem to be progressing very quickly. Um, it's a great opportunity for the city. A common complaint we get from residents of new apartments in my electorate is that there's simply not enough green space, that there are too few trees in, in their neighbourhood. They want those big, big deep planted trees around their complexes, but unless we require developers to deliver them, that's not going to happen. So I think it's quite important that this council, uh, gets on with it and, and looks seriously at increasing the deep planting requirement to a minimum of twenty five percent of the site. I know the council is currently contemplating fifteen percent and I suggest that that's still far too low. Um, other cities around the world have much more, um, expansive requirements when it comes to this sort of stuff. And, and Brisbane is unusual in, in terms of how lax it is in allowing developers to build whatever they want on their site without setting aside enough space for green space and the natural world. Um, just on the neighbourhood planning process more generally, I've made my comments around the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan a, a couple of times now, so I won't rehash them, but I, I do want to acknowledge that the officers within those teams are, are trying their hardest within very narrow parameters. They've been set an impossible task by this administration and, um, unfortunately, they're stuck trying to please everyone and, and in the process end up pleasing almost no one. But I think it's, it's obvious to me now that actually, if we're serious about making our neighbourhood planning process genuinely meaningfully democratic, um, we need to put a lot more funding into, and into that consultation process, but actually make it a genuine decision making process rather than a shallow, tokenistic, um, sham process. And so there's a lot of opportunities there and, and I think there are some good people in those teams who are trying their best, but it requires this administration to be a bit more open minded and flexible and, and willing to think outside the box a little bit more. And yeah, unfortunately, I haven't seen much of that under Programme Four in, in my time as councillor and I don't level that as a specific criticism of the current chairperson. I, I think it goes to the values of the administration as a whole and, and it's, it, it seems like whoever's in charge of that programme, um, it, we still see these same problems recurring. I do want to thank, um, the administration for including Boundary Street in South Brisbane within the, um, as one of the so-called study, uh, locations for the village precincts, um, programme. I'm a little bit unclear still as to whether there'll be any public consultation and conversation around that. Is studying, it, does that just mean that council will look further as to whether to fund it in future years? Or does that mean that council is actually going to start some conversations with the traders and other key stakeholders in this financial year? And through you, Mister Chair, I'm hoping councillor Burke will just clarify that. Um, it's still not entirely clear to me what, what exactly council is doing with that money and, and what the exact, um, process is going to be. So the more information we can have about that, the better. Um, I still have, uh, concerns as well around the, um, the, the lack of clarity around, um, the strategic planning, um, elements of this budget programme. So it seems like there's a lot of decision making that's happening behind closed doors that I, as a councillor, am not, um, able to access and that residents of Brisbane certainly aren't able to access either. So this council seems to be making a lot of decisions about the future of this city and then only at a very late stage going out to the public and saying, oh, um, do you want option A or option B? When the rest of the alphabet has all been, already been ruled out and taken off the table. And that's not genuine or meaningful consultation. If we are doing detailed long term studies and having, um, big picture conversations about what trajectory the, the city is heading in, then I think that should involve residents at every stage of the process, rather than just as a tack on thing at the end, oh, we'd better do some additional consultation. Um, I do want to just give a quick plug for the public art on buildings and infrastructure programme and say that I think that's a great programme and it really needs a lot more funding. It's disappointing that, um, there's so many other big expenditures, expenditures in this council budget. Um, and I've remarked before that we spend something like four point four million dollars removing graffiti and then only less, less than two hundred thousand dollars on, on painting new murals. And I know there are a few bu- other budget programmes where public art is also funded, but it really does seem a bit unbalanced to me that that programme gets so little funding. Um, and I think it's good that council does something, but it could be doing a lot more, paying artists to deliver murals and, and artworks that respond to Brisbane's local identity and characters are very valuable and effective use of funds. And it's a great way for this administration to support the arts. I know that a lot of, um, councillors and decision makers are often scratching their head saying, oh, well, we love the arts, we want to support the arts, what can we do? Just pay more artists to do more stuff, it's, it's that straightforward sometimes. Um, you've got a three billion dollar budget and there's plenty of money to go around if, if you think a bit more creatively about, um, what your genuine priorities are. Um, I still remain concerned that the suburban construction management task force is underfunded. I don't think there are enough offices allocated in that programme because we often find through my Gallowa Ward office that response times are inadequate and that, um, requests which we consider fairly high priorities don't get action for a couple of days, by which point it's too late to prove that, um, any, um, inappropriate action has actually been taken by the developer. You really need a, I, I think, a closer relationship between the rapid response team and the, uh, S C M T and, and I, I think really we probably need more offices within the S C M T itself because something's still not working there. I, I'm not privy to the internal decision making and how things are prioritized and, um, how staff are allocated. But my experience at the other end as sort of a service user of that system is that it's still just really, really slow to get outcomes and it seems that they have very few, um, levers to pull and, and that they still seem to be going a little bit too light on in terms of some of those developers. We consistently see what we consider to be examples of developers breaching their construction management plans or failing to comply with basic, um, and obvious requirements and little action from council. And I think that's something that, um, again, a, a few more staff allocated to that enforcement sort of, and investigation team would be a really good thing. Um, I just finally want to, um, mention that around the, there's, there's a few projects in this plan around, um, mapping the city in terms of virtual Brisbane and, um, the interactive mapping, et cetera, et cetera. Some of those are still quite hard to access for residents and I know the three D mapping takes up a huge amount of data and is very, um, requires a fair bit of processing power, but it would be nice for, for some of that to be a bit, bit more accessible to the public. Um, certainly I, as a councillor, don't really understand it, like, I, I would like to be able to just jump on the website and look at the virtual Brisbane map in its current form and see- map in its current form and see, oh, this is where it's up to at the moment, and to be able to use that as a tool that I can then show to residents and say, here's what virtual Brisbane says your suburb's going to look like in a few years, and here's a render of what the height limits allowed by the neighbourhood plan are. That would be a really effective communication tool for me as a councillor, and maybe that's something that the council officers and councillor Burke's team could be looking at is how can we make virtual Brisbane or a form of virtual Brisbane more readily accessible online so that in the same way as residents can look up the city plan and see...
Councillor Sri, your time's expired. Further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise also to speak on Programme Four and in particular the neighbourhood planning section under 4.2.1.1. Having done a couple of neighbourhood plans, as councillor Burke said, being Upper Kedron and the Gap, two very different neighbourhood plans, engagement was done two very different ways, and the new level of engagement that we've seen through the neighbourhood plan for the Gap, and in particularly the use of the mapping and the dropping of the pins, the technology around being able to share that information and attach photographs of something that's meaningful for a resident and attaching notes to that that they then can share with others within the community is a very, very powerful tool for engagement, so much so that when I was repping councillor Burke down at Parliament House recently for the Planning Institute of Australia Queensland branch awards, the use of the city council's technology around neighbourhood planning and the level of engagement came up as a benchmark for all local government areas. There was a certain level of envy in the room with how our planners, and particularly in the neighbourhood planning process, conduct engagement with the community, and the level of engagement that they actually achieve was noted. I have to say, having gone through two separate neighbourhood plans with two different types of engagement, the later one, in my opinion, being far superior in terms of level of engagement and activity within the community, using things like pop-ups. We'd have a call flute wrapped around a bus stop sign advising people what we're on about and where, popping up in the shopping centre, having information sessions there with the officers, and I want to thank the officers for being there and walking the residents through the process. A lot of residents within my ward are not particularly IT savvy, a lot of them don't have computers, so it was one thing to actually see that the officers engage with the residents and showing them what they could do, and even writing down for them whether they can go at a later date and find that information again. It was particularly helpful. Notifying, the simple thing of notifying residents that there was a session for neighbourhood planning was just outstanding. We would wrap bus stop signs, we would wrap street signs, just with a simple call flute to advise them when these sessions were on, when they could attend, and even down to the point where, you know, there's a number there, they can phone an officer, talk to a planner and find out if they really had to bring something along. It was just an outstanding experience. Again, we saw the same technology similarly used with Brisbane Future Blueprint, where we had the gamification, using new technologies again to engage with the community at a separate level to find out what is important to them, two similar levels of technology used in two different ways. It's one thing for us to say that we're going to do this, but when we actually engage with our residents and actively go out and seek the information that we're looking for from them, we do get a better result. And in part, that is the job of us as councillors. It's our job to engage with our community and get them to have those conversations that we would like them to have around those particular topics within the neighbourhood planning scheme. And I do particularly want to thank all the officers for both the Fernie Grove, Upper Kedron neighbourhood plan and the Gap neighbourhood plan for the level of engagement that they did provide to both those particular neighbourhood planning communities. The second item I'd like to talk about is the village precinct projects, 4.2.3.1. And I'll speak just to the precinct that councillor Burke mentioned in his information sessions, Ashgrove West, a real success story around small business. Since I became councillor, I've been quite particularly focused on living local, buying local and shopping local. And this particular community, when I entered the ward office three years ago, looked like it was going to be more of a health hub. We had three gyms, a couple of dentists, a couple of doctors. It was sort of heading down that path, but ultimately, it's turned around. It's now a vibrant precinct, an entertainment precinct. We have Macho Macho, which has on-street dining and is particularly successful in itself. We also have a New York-style wine bar that's opened up there as well. And this... Thank you, councillor Murphy. We do have the 385. We do have the 385. And the 385, just for your benefit, councillor Merfley runs five minutes during peak times and 10 minutes outside. So we're doing all right. Not quite a Paris metro, but it's not bad. But it's a vibrant little precinct now that is crying out for that little bit more, and upgrading the precinct as councillor Burke outlined with the village precinct projects is just going to lift the area so much more. It's going to invite a lot more of the community to come up and spend their time there, play there if they have to, definitely the place to exercise if that's your thing, or have a meal with the family. It's going to be great. So I'm very much looking forward to engaging with the business community and also the local community that's up there around the development and design of that precinct. And I look forward to all the councillors in this place spending some time in West Ashgrove, enjoying all the benefits that a revitalised little business hub has to offer. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on this programme, Future Brisbane, and just want to start by talking about neighbourhood planning. And I note that councillor Burke responded to what the Leader of the Opposition said in his speech and that there is less funding in this budget for neighbourhood planning, and he said it's because the big bad state government is more efficient than ever before and is getting through neighbourhood planning much more efficiently, which is great, good on them, that's great. But I think something else is happening here, and it is a conversation I've been having with staff in the neighbourhood planning area, and I do want to thank them for the work that they do in picking up what councillor Sri said. They are fantastic people doing the very best they can, those council officers, with the resources they're given and the parameters they are set by this administration. But I know from talking to some of them, and I'm not going to reveal who and get them into trouble, particularly relating to the Sangate and District neighbourhood plan, they say to me that this is the fastest, most truncated neighbourhood plan they have ever been a part of. So this is a trend going forward that the administration is, I suppose, losing interest in properly consulting with communities. And I suppose the sort of outcomes that they have been giving communities and the sort of feedback that those communities have been in turn giving back to council would suggest that, you know, this council stopped listening to people a long time ago. I think it's pretty clear that any trust that the people of Brisbane had in councillor Burke as the chair of this area or this new Lord Mayor or anyone who's part of this LMP administration has been eroded over a long period of time when it comes to outcomes of neighbourhood planning. So I have concerns. I've been engaging with the Sangate District neighbourhood plan process, but I do worry about the outcome that we will get if proper resources and time isn't given to that team to consult properly with the community and come up with the best possible outcome when it comes to that. Similarly, we know that the associated infrastructure that goes with neighbourhood planning, the LGIP, which goes with providing that infrastructure that is required as a result of development happening in our community, and we hear all the time ad nauseam this administration saying that the state government is forcing council, well, it sounds like this when you listen to them, that the state government is forcing council to build 188,000 homes, and that's what they say to people out in the community in one way or another. But what they don't talk about is the huge deficit when it comes to providing infrastructure that is required as a result of developments. We're talking about those new road connections, new footpaths in our communities, new parks and playgrounds and green spaces and things like that, and that's where this administration's failure when it comes to planning for our suburbs is laid bare for those communities to see. On village precinct projects, this year, there's slightly more information from the Chair about what is included in this programme. Last year, the answer was, we don't know, we didn't have a list, we had no idea, but then in a few short weeks after the budget, they were rolling out announcements left, right and centre. So I'm glad that after a year of pressure from the opposition, that councillor Burke has finally come clean about some of those projects that will actually be budgeted for this year. But what isn't clear is what the outcomes of the planning money, as the council for the GABBA mentioned just a moment ago. We know, we have one example at the Corso at Seven Hills that was funded for investigation last year. Now, to date, the local councillor hasn't been consulted, there has been no public consultation whatsoever, and there is no information to suggest, even though councillor Burke has mentioned the Corso again, to suggest that any work will be carried out, and if any work is to be carried out, if that community will be consulted, maybe they'll be notified when work's about to start. So that process is shaping up to be a deeply flawed one again, which is in the LMP's DNA. I note there is funding for the Sangate Road at Boondle area, shopping area, half of which is known as Sue's Corner, the other half doesn't have a name, but it's in the same area, across the road on the other side of Sangate Road. Money is allocated for a planning study there. If the same process that has been followed at the Corso at Seven Hills, I'd be deeply disappointed in that we would go a whole year without seeing any evidence of that work and that expenditure happening in that area, Mr. Chair. So I would strongly encourage councillor Burke and the administration to be more upfront and open with the people of Brisbane. I'm not sure what they're trying to hide when it comes to the planning around these village precinct projects. I think councillor Burke should come clean. And on public art, something that we have had different presentations about and discussed in our committee meetings over the last few years, is something important, and I know that councillor Sri finds this important as well as a member of that committee, and I do as well, and I think that the amount of funding that is allocated on this Creative Brisbane programme line item here is disappointingly low when we talk about Brisbane supposedly being a vibrant place. And I know public art, and we have different things like botanical that happens here in the inner city, and there is stuff that happens right across the CBD in the inner city, but all we need is a greater level of investment in our suburban areas to complement the work, if it ever happens, on these village precinct projects out in the suburbs. I know my local area, the only art that has been funded has been through what was known as the Lord Mayor Suburban Initiative Fund, things like the large mural along Rainbow Street, the new mural we're about to get on the Sangate Telstra Exchange Building, up on the Senior Citizen Centre in Sangate, down on Shauncliff State School, a new mural about to start. All those things are being funded locally, not out of this programme here, because simply there's not enough money being allocated to things like that which make our suburbs vibrant. So I certainly think more money needs to be allocated to that so that councillors aren't faced with the choice of funding things like this, which are fantastic and I'm a big supporter of, and, you know, other community groups potentially getting less or missing out on those vital funds. The only thing that the administration has done when it comes to public art in my community is remove a piece of public art, a sculpture that was installed as part of the original skip upgrade at the time, back in the 1990s, and then when the new skip upgrade happened a couple of years ago, that piece of public art was removed. And the reason I was given is because it was severely damaged and the base of that sandstone, sorry, sandstone sculpture was cracked and it had to go, and I took the administration's word for it and said, okay, if that's the case, that's the case. They assured me it would be returned, the original sculptor, and repurposed in some way, and I thought, okay, that's fair enough, that it's a large piece of sandstone, even if it's broken in half, they'll be able to use it. Went on a trip up to Leydley last year, one weekend, and lo and behold, that sculpture in its entirety is sitting outside a pub in Leydley. So this is a piece of public art that was funded by the ratepayers of Brisbane that was removed by the Brisbane City Council, and from what I understand, what I was advised was given back to the sculptor to, I assume, then sell to a pub in Leydley to put on display. Now, that is this administration's commitment to public art in our suburbs, which is very, very poor, Mr. Chair, and I think we can do so much better as a council when it comes to our outer suburban areas.
Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Chair, I rise to speak on Programme Four, Future Brisbane. It's really all in the name of the programme, making sure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. One of the ways this administration is doing that is by getting residents involved in having a say about the future of their area. This is done through Service 4.2.1.1, our award-winning neighbourhood planning programme. This financial year, we see the Cooperu and Districts neighbourhood plan finalised, giving residents of my ward a voice and a say about what they value, what they want to see protected and where local future growth occurs. Council listened to the concerns of residents in my ward and based on extensive feedback, made changes to the plan, a plan which was ticked off and approved by the Labor State Government. Chair, this year, the service will also oversee the implementation of Brisbane's Future Blueprint. As you know, the blueprint, which implements the outcomes of Plan Your Brisbane, has eight principles, and they touch every aspect of the Cooperu Ward. In particular, principle two, keeping Brisbane clean and green to make our city livable and sustainable for our children and their children to follow. Principle three, creating more to see and do, and principle four, protecting the Brisbane backyard and our unique character. Under this service, we will also see the establishment of a suburban renewal task force. The task force, modelled on the successful, long-running urban renewal task force, which was originally established in the 1990s, will help give suburbs a facelift, looking at issues such as major thoroughfares through small shopping strips, sewerage and stormwater issues, as well as small business support in the suburbs. While the locations for the programme are yet to be formally identified in future years, I will always advocate on behalf of Stones Corner traders to find ways that council can bring new life to the precinct and support local businesses. This brings me to Service 4.2.3.1, Village Precincts Project, another key deliverable of this programme. The capital projects in this service are a fine-grained way in which council enhances Brisbane's lifestyle, assisting in local economic development of suburban centres. They are an initiative to deliver neighbourhood-scale placemaking improvement projects within the suburbs of Brisbane to improve the quality of the public realm around local centres by addressing accessibility, environmental improvements, community building and supporting local businesses. For the 2019-20 financial year, projects will focus on identifying and undertaking projects that can achieve environmental, social and economic upgrades to suburban centres, boost local activations, entertainment and amenity, and build on internal and external partnerships. The Cooperu Ward is a tapestry of villages, each with their own unique character. These villages are the backbone of our community, and I want to see them thrive and grow into the future. And that is why I'm so pleased that next financial year, the planning will begin for two village precincts within the Cooperu Ward, one at the popular Camp Hill Martha Street precinct and another on Old Cleveland Road at Cooperu, a site which was recently devastated by fire. The hard-working small business traders of my ward are in many cases run by local families. The hard-working small business traders of my ward are in many cases run by local families. These are people who invest their absolute heart and soul into operating their enterprise. Over the next 12 months, I am looking forward to working with the project teams and traders to begin planning for some positive improvements to enhance the character of these popular local precincts. This will be especially important in the case of the commercial area on the corner of Old Cleveland Road and St Leonard Street at Cooperu. Ten businesses, including a bakery, bottle shop and restaurant, were destroyed in April when fire ripped through their premises. Needless to say, this had a devastating personal impact on both employers and employees, and council is doing the right thing to begin planning for a new village to emerge from the ashes. I commend and thank the Lord Mayor, Planning Chair and council officers for giving consideration to the small business owners of my ward. Chair, speaking of small business owners, this brings me to Service 4.2.3.2, 'Creative Brisbane'. This service facilitates and delivers public artwork and creative lighting across a range of scales and project types. After one of the recent and regular meetings of traders at Stones Corner, I walked away inspired by the determination of small business owners who come together, united in their efforts to promote and enhance this local precinct. Unsure exactly on how I could support those efforts, a bright idea was suggested to light up the magnificent trees which form the gateway to Stones Corner. I'm absolutely thrilled and delighted that the leopard trees outside the Stones Corner Library will be floodlit and the impressive fig tree will be budlit under the City of Lights programme. This will support local traders and the local night-time economy. With all the different places to eat and enjoy or drink, Stones Corner is becoming a foodie's paradise. Once again, I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor and Chair for their interest and support of the small business owners in my ward, and I commend this programme to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on future planning in the council, Future Brisbane, sorry, in the council budget, the planning section of council's budget. I'm going to start with a few things, but firstly, the Maruka Stephens Neighbourhood Plan. Now, in 2014, this council amalgamated two neighbourhood plans, the Stephens Neighbourhood Plan, which covered suburbs in my ward, and the Maruka Neighbourhood Plan, which covered suburbs in councillor Griffith's ward. We were steadfastly opposed to the creation of this giant south-side planning area, certainly not a neighbourhood bigger than a district, multiple districts being pushed together. We voted against it, we moved amendments to separate them, which the LMP voted against. And interestingly, since then, all they've done is whitened their own city plan 2014. So for political purposes, the LMP carved out Fairfield, a tiny part of Anneli, like half a dozen streets in Anneli, and joined it into this beast called the Dutton Park Fairfield Neighbourhood Plan, which was not supported by myself and councillor Abrahams at the time, there are different community of interests through there with different needs, and certainly as the plan evolved and finally came through here, was not supported by councillor Sri and myself. Now they're doing it again. They're carving out another section of the Maruka Stephens Neighbourhood Plan that just a few years ago, they forced on this community by, it's a bit unclear, it seems to be it's going to be Maruka, Salisbury and then a new part, which will be Nathan. And they're going to do a neighbourhood plan for that. So the Maruka Stephens Neighbourhood Plan, I mean, just doesn't exist, city plans completely failed in that respect. But that's the problem with planning. There is one area, in my observation as an independent over the last 10 years, and it's fundamentally the reason I am an independent, is this LMP administration has catastrophically failed the Brisbane residents when it comes to planning and development issues in our city. They have trashed gorgeous suburbs in our city with inappropriate development, they've failed to protect character housing through the planning scheme, they've allowed perverse decisions to be approved, you know, allowing residential homes to be knocked down.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor.
I ask the councillor face the chair and speak through the chair in her speech.
I'm sure councillor Johnston knows the rules. I hadn't been observing her while she spoke, but I trust that she'll be speaking to the microphone.
Yeah, well, I'm sure councillor Adams can point us to that rule too. The perverse decisions that this council has forced on our community, you know, where residential homes are being knocked down for commercial developments in low-density residential areas, that's happening on a regular basis in my ward. Backyards are completely lost because character houses are being butchered and then half a dozen units are being built in the backyard. The planning scheme failures by this LMP administration run deep. There are communities that have been devastated by their actions over many years now, and it's all around this city. And they clearly had some sort of epiphany about it last year, but even then, they have still not got it right, still not got it right. Councillor Burke stands up proudly proclaiming this 110,000, I think it is, consultation, when almost 90,000 of those were hits on a game. Now, I did it myself dozens of times to try and find out what you could and couldn't do, because you literally could not achieve low-density outcomes. That's not consultation. Then there were the postcards and the colouring in competition. I think they had, from memory, about 200 written submissions, including mine and residents from my area. There might have been some other online surveys, a few hundreds of those as well. But in terms of a planning scheme outcome, this administration has got it wrong the whole time that they've been in office. City plan was a diabolical decision, and we are still paying for that today. The disconnect between the planning scheme and infrastructure in this city is just fundamentally flawed. There are LGIP proposals in my area that are supposed to be being done now that are not being done. They're the things I advocate for in this chamber, drainage in Yoronga, intersection upgrades at Graceville. All of these things are actually in the LGIP, but they're not being funded. Now, I'd like to say a few words about the village precincts project, because last year that was announced, and there were a few winners picked straight away. We weren't asked as councillors to nominate areas, they weren't selected off the existing skip waiting list, you know, we got a couple of LMP pork barrels and that was it. So a few councillors went out and said to their communities, yeah, a few councillors went out to their communities and said, hey, this brand-new project or programme is out there, what do you think? Now, residents in Anneli and residents in Graceville spoke up, and I brought petitions with hundreds of signatures here to this place, asking for Anneli and Graceville to be considered for a village precinct project. Anneli shops are probably some of the most rundown in this city, and I note that councillor Cunningham, not a peep from her, not a sausage from her, she's probably unaware that since 2009, I've been calling for a skip in Anneli. And, no, I doubt she has. And for over a year, I've been calling, well, for a year, I've been calling for a village precincts project in Anneli. And I note that the planning chairperson listed a whole heap of places being investigated for the future, and neither Anneli nor Graceville were on the list. Despite this being considered by council, petitions being done by residents, yet again, the LMP administration is ignoring very old shopping precincts that have not had any updates for 20, 30, 40 years or more, and it is not good enough, not good enough. And I cannot believe that this administration continues to ignore key parts of the city with no explanation. We still don't know what the criteria are for the village precincts project. I mean, councillor Burke's read a whole list out, but certainly the ones that we have petitioned for and asked for in my area, yet again, have been ignored by the LMP administration. Equally, the City of Lights project, that's a really interesting one, and I just want to put on the record, we were sent a memo about the City of Lights project last year, and that memo told us that our shopkeepers could apply, but they had to put, from memory, it was 20% of the cost into the project. And, you know, I went out and spoke to my shopkeepers and passed on the information to them, and they were interested, I have to say, but they were concerned that they had to put money in. Interestingly, we heard that at some point during the year, that changed. The businesses weren't applying for the grants to do this. And councillor Burke gave a great explanation of the three categories in the information request session. Sometime last year, he decided, I presume, that they would just fund them wherever they wanted, that council would fully pay for their installation in certain places, and the shopkeepers weren't being asked to put in 20%. Now, was this change in policy communicated to all councillors so that we could make requests? No, it was not. And again, we heard a list from councillor Burke about where these were going, and, you know, it was quite interesting, there's a few different places around the city, but he failed to communicate with councillors that the scheme and the administration of the scheme had changed and how councillors could access, how councillors could access that for small business areas in their ward. Now, I'll flag, I've made a request for Sherwood. Given councillors' lighting assets, as we heard from councillor Cunningham, she asked and boom, they're lighting up the tree outside the library down at Stones Corner. I presume I'm going to get a response from councillor Burke, boom, like that, saying, yes councillor, we'll go and light up those, oh, jacaranda trees outside the 25-year-old Sherwood skip, because, gee whiz, we were going to fund your footpaths there, but now we're not going to fund your footpath there, but instead we'll light up your trees. So I flag that I'll be bringing that back to council when I get a response about what we're going to do to assist with that. I've made a request now, apparently that's all you have to do, and then suddenly your project will be funded. So let me be clear, I did that last year too with the village precincts project in Anneli and Graceville, but gee whiz, not funded.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on Programme 4.2.3.1. It's got a couple of projects, areas to that programme that I'm particularly interested and excited about. City of Lights is one of them. I do want to mention that there's quite a few shopping centres out my way, particularly in that Sunnybank precinct, that have actually gone ahead and done the ferry lights, as we call them, or budlighting, whatever you want to call them, in the trees along that particular intersection, and it looks really good and it's very impressive, and I'm very happy that the shopping centres have gone ahead and done that. I look forward to seeing what Market Square do once they've finished developing their site. We did have the unfortunate issue though of a particular shopping centre who put some lights, bulbs in the trees. They weren't by any stretch of the imagination budlights, they were probably the size of soccer balls. Unfortunately, they chose to put red bulbs in these lights, which meant when residents were coming along to the traffic lights, they would suddenly see a red light and then they would stop and realise that it wasn't actually the traffic light that was the red, it was the actual light in the trees. So we negotiated with the owners of the shopping centre, and they've changed the colours of those light bulbs, which has made a much better outcome for everybody concerned. Village precinct projects, I know that Station Road at Sunnybank has been mentioned as a location for one of these projects to take, occur. My understanding from this is that there's a variety of things can happen in a village precinct project, from sidewalk resurfacing, accessibly ramps, tree planting, garden beds, any number of things, perhaps some sort of furniture, chairs, whatever. This particular precinct where this is destined to happen is actually quite a busy little shopping centre. There's a number of shops there, there's a Sunnybank Kemart Pharmacy, there's the Sunnybank Vet Clinic, which has not long recovered from an unfortunate fire incident, café S152, and then the Soul Bistro, which is world renowned, I might add, for its chicken. And I know that you can go there pretty much any night of the week, and you'll find that there is plenty of customers, if not in the restaurant, certainly queuing outside the door to get in. So I look forward to working with councillor Burke, the officers and the owners of the shopping shops here at this little precinct, to find out what it is that they would like to see to improve their precinct in that area, how we can assist them in making it that much nicer and more attractable to everyone to come along, and that much more accessible for everyone. So I look forward to working with them and finding out what the outcome will be. Thank you very much.
Further speakers? Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Chair. I'd now move that council now adjourn for lunch for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Marks, that this council now adjourn for a period of one hour for the purpose of lunch, commences when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. For those who are interested, this clock has stopped. Time hasn't stopped, merely the clock, all right? So, no.